Gonna call this meeting to end. Roll call please.
Mike Krueger.
Here.
Tom DeBries.
Present.
Frank French.
Here.
Maria Bustinas. Jason Paul Thompson.
Here.
Amanda Pullins.
Here.
Sue Lee.
Alright. That moves us down to approval of the agenda.
I need to approve the agenda of project.
Of course.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Now we're to approval of last month's minutes.
I'm only wait for the minutes of October first, two thousand nineteen and project.
Of course.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. That moves us down to public comments, any matter not on the agenda. Anybody who would like to make a public comment that's not on the agenda, come on up sir. Have you state your name and address?
Yeah, Bruce Farrell, live at five ninety-four Oak Hill Court in Roily Oaks. Um, I missed the last meeting unfortunately, I understand the fourth phase of Roily Oaks was on the agenda last meeting. Missed it, um, I have a concern about if, I guess what you've done is reapproved that?
Preliminary.
Preliminary.
For phase four?
Yes.
It was preliminary plat, we're next moving on to the final preliminary. Okay. Um, I guess I pass these out to you guys so you can look and see what I'm talking about. Sorry to you guys.
Yeah, for us.
Phase two, three, and four. Phase two is where our house is, I've got another copy of some of the ones.
Let one down here.
Now, phase two is the house that we bought, and at that time, um, we were told, if you look at the plating here, that behind lot sixty-seven, which is the one I own, there would be open space. And that was quite big in our decision to buy that particular piece of property. My wife and I have lived in Rockford on some acreage, we sold downsized, people down here love the area by the way. But, that was one of the reasons we bought that lot, because it's open space. Phase three, which was last year, which is the next page, it still shows as open space. Unfortunately, when I look at page, the last page here, in phase four, it's all of a sudden it's a lot. And I'm not anti-development, or I'm not worried about what's going on, I knew this was coming when I bought this. But, that open space needs to stay. If you go through all of this from two thousand three forward, none of the open space in this preliminary stuff and all, none of it's ever been done away with.
You have one minute remaining.
It's always been open space. I'm asking you to go ahead and approve, you know, phase four, but that needs to stay open space. You need to go back and not amend what was there before, changing what was there. And that was a big part of our decision by the property, it will affect the property then.
Sir, have a question?
Yeah.
Are you a part of the homeowners association?
There is no homeowners association.
There is supposed to be to maintain this open space. That was part of the...
There is no homeowners association, he's in phase two.
So phase two didn't get one?
Phase two did not get one, phase three does not have one.
So you want us to put back a open space that needs to be maintained by the residents in phase three and phase four?
None of the other open space in any of that is maintained, it just left as open space.
I'm just curious.
Look, there's three or four spots, if you look through here, that were left as open space, and they're just lack.
Well, for the time being, but those will have to be maintained in the future.
Well, that may be, but there's no homeowners association do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
That would be part of the rest of what I'd like to talk about at some point.
Okay, go ahead Brian.
I just want a quick response to this. We have a final, there's three steps to the planning process. There's a preliminary plat, which was approved this summer for phase four, which we did have a public hearing. Uh, yeah, there was not many people there, but, you know, part of it is, is that you work out these items, when you go through a preliminary plat, to what would be the next step, a final preliminary plat, which is what it would be planned, would be on the agenda for, um, December. Um, and I will have a staff report speaking to this issue, specifically of that change, uh, with that consideration that you just brought on. So just a kind of a heads up to the planning commission for December.
They've added a bunch of lots in there too, which you're gonna have no problem with, I understand profit, but that, that open space is gonna affect me.
Okay. Alright, thank you, sir. We have reserved time for Eric, is he there?
He is right here.
You are here, hi, sir.
Hi Eric. So, I'm Eric Thompson, I'm the office manager for professional code inspections. For those of you don't know, we handle all of the administration enforcement of the construction code for Middleville and majority of Barry County. With me today, I have Josh Case, he's our building inspector, and we understand that the planning commission has some questions for us, maybe some issues that we could address, and, um...
Well, I guess maybe, village, we have zoning approval, especially new homes, that's mainly what I believe the talk, conversation was last month, is that there's, we work together, we have some communities, you guys do zoning, but we have our own zoning authority, and then people, professional code inspections, does building, mechanical, plumbing, and electrical.
And electrical.
So, with the, as we've seen in a lot of my reports, staff reports, there's a lot of new homes coming up here in the village.
Yep.
A lot of new, new homes being built, and the process is, you get zoning approval from the local municipality, then you go to PCI and you get your building approval, then you go do an inspection and get prepared for the certificate of occupancy, and then goes back to the village for zoning approval. After that, I believe the conversation, Mike please step up, step in and ask questions. Sometimes there's situations where the homeowners may have some issues come up. In your experience, what kind of options do they have, um, that you may be able to share, uh, to the planning commission? Because we've got so many new residents.
Yeah, so that's largely gonna be dependent on the nature of the issue. Um, you know, something like if they don't like the color of the paint they put in the bathroom, not an issue that we can get involved in because that's primarily an aesthetic thing, and the color doesn't address those matters, but if they think that there's faulty construction, or corners were cut, or maybe that we missed something during the inspection, which doesn't happen very often, uh, they can bring that to our attention. Uh, our staff will go out and look at what the issues are, um, depending on what they are, if it's a, you know, a poor workmanship issue, or an issue where the contractor just did not follow through their obligations, um, there's remedies you can take through the Bureau of Construction Code by initiating a complaint against the individual builder, and at that point in time, the state of Michigan would ask us to follow up, conduct an inspection, provide them with a report, and then there's, you know, a formal hearing procedure that will take place at the time. So, um, you know, and part of the process that this goes through is, we don't just, you know, issue the building permit and go on to do inspections, it goes through a very thorough plan review process. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Josh and let him elaborate a little bit on what he looks at before he actually lets a permit go out the door, because it is quite a stringent, um, a procedure that we go through.
Well, basically what you're looking for is energy code compliance, and there's multiple things that you can, you know, there's three different ways you can get there, and there's a lot of confusion with that with a lot of local builders, and then the higher end guys that do a lot of homes. There's a performance model, which is basically a, a group of different parts and pieces of the house, how it's oriented, what windows are faced and where, so on and so forth, to establish an energy use of the home. And that's usually done by HERS radar, and it's a pretty thick envelope that shows the energy usage of each home individually, and how it sits on the lot. And then there's a, um, a res check, which a lot of builders use a res check, just because it's just a plug and play deal off the internet, it's easy for them to use, it's, usually they're higher end components anyway, so they don't have an issue getting the energy code compliance. And then there's just a simple prescriptive method that's basically right out of the book, you have to use this XR valve here, this window you raiding here, and it's just a plug and play deal. And then we look at, you know, egress windows, use of each room, um, construction types, you know, so on and so forth, all the, all the trust diagrams, um, foundation design, if we're in an area that needs soil boring, we do soil boring analysis, um, to verify the footing's there in the proper soil, and then more or less just basically, you know, experimenting stuff and that, so... But, uh, that's basically the process of getting permanent going, um, and each project's different, obviously, but...
So, and then of course we coordinate a lot with Brian or the other municipalities who work with, you know, the, you know, if the area has public water sewer, we work with that department, we work with the health departments if they don't have public water sewer. Soil erosion department, in cases of flood plains and whatnot, we work with the DEQ, um, you know, if you're building on M thirty-seven, we're gonna be working with M dots, local road commissions, um, so, we spin a lot of plates before we let one of these things go out the door. But, um, I guess if, if an issue comes up for a resident with a home that is either under construction or post-construction, um, best thing to have them do is just get in touch with us. We're open from five Monday through Friday, and we'll be happy to field their calls and address any concerns that they may have.
And I would say we do our best to communicate, make sure the right parties get the right answers, you know, to which questions they're asking.
Yes, I agree.
We've essentially had some issues that range anywhere from common punchless items, trim, paint, stuff like that, not getting grass to grow in the front yard, to stuff as extensive as the panels underrated that they didn't move in because they've added some electric appliances, or they've got water coming in their basement, or air coming through the windows. So when they have these major type issues and they're not getting any resolution from the builder, they should contact you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do what we can, like, you know, a couple of those things on your list we can address, you know, punchless, correct paint, and trim. The code, just a couple of years ago, I believe it was a previous cycle, they took the workmanship out of it. So, you know, if we see trim we don't like, we can't write that up as a violation anymore. And that's probably a good thing because this guy was one of the best craftsmen in the county, and I don't think a trim job would get by, but, um...
The foundations, I mean, you know, the foundation, a lot of times it can fracture and start just the duration of when they're putting in, and so on and so forth. There's lots of ways you can get that water stopped, but most of that's an issue if the homeowner is not getting any headway with the, with the builder, that's usually because the builder doesn't wanna do it, not more or less it's an issue structural, but it can be fixed, that's where it's best to come through us and we can, um, take it, you know, address that issue and make the builder accountable for what he did, so...
I think you pretty much answered it, thanks guys.
Yep.
Thank you.
That moves us down to master planning update.
Yeah, just a really quick housekeeping item, um, the village master planning proposal was approved by village council. If you recall at the last, um, council commission meeting, we talked about the amount, they approved that amount. Um, next step is procedural notice of intent to the master plan as required by the Michigan Plan and Maquette Act. That is attached in your package, and it's got your name on it, the chair, the planning commission, I wanted to make sure. This is more informational, that we send it out to those, those notice groups, um, that includes adjacent communities, that's obviously Thornham Township, the Barry County Planning Commission, the West Michigan Regional Planning Commission, road commission, M dot, transit, consumers' energy, they'll be a notice of intent to plan. As you see on the back page of my staff memo, that's just a tentative timeline. However, you know, we mail those out and then we will have a kickoff meeting, uh, next month, um, with having the consultant here to kind of set the framework for how we wanna go through and really do the master plan. The areas, the highlights, right now, yes, we do have a subcommittee that we've been working diligently on on certain items, but we're gonna make sure we're gonna follow that track, getting this, uh, master plan updated, and just to let the public know, there is opportunities to come to state court meetings, public hearings, to really decide on what comes first in the plan, followed by that, sometimes you'll get a zoning and a development request follows that. So, just to read, a plan is very, very important, uh, on how the direction the community wants to see in terms of development uh, and growth, such as those matters. So, it's mainly just for your information, uh, if you're cool, if you're good with that.
Yes.
We'll have it, get it mailed out and step in the process, and then we'll get with Nathan, uh, Williams and Wills, we'll have a kickoff meeting. And you said?
Thank you guys for stopping.
Thank you very much for having us.
Alrighty. That moves us down to new business. Special land use twenty nineteen, that's three, oh three, oh four site plan. For gas station at twelve, one twelve Broadway. Mr. Bryan?
Well, I'll let the...
Okay, okay.
Hello. Can we hear, sorry? Good evening, my name is, uh, Mandy Goss, I'm a CESO, I'm here representing Casey's today, uh, with engineers on the project. Give me my address. Oh, you're good.
No.
Sometime, you know.
It's right up here too, Mandy.
Oh, great.
Would that be easier for you?
Uh, they can see that one, I'll let you, I see this one, and, um, this is just the existing site currently, how it sits today, um, just to kind of give you an overview of what's there, there's currently two homes, and, um, ECS computers, all three of those are vacant, and they would all be demolished, and the sites would be combined to make a one point eight five acre parcel for the new development. Just to kind of point that out to start. Sorry. Um, so what is being proposed here is a Casey's general store. Um, Casey's offers self-service gas station, a wide variety of grocery items, and an array of freshly prepared foods. Um, they're most popular for their, uh, made from scratch pizzas, they deliver, doughnuts, subs and sandwiches. Um, they are part of the community, they like small towns, fifty percent of their two thousand stores are located in areas with populations of five thousand or less. Um, only seventeen percent are in areas of twenty thousand or more, so just to give you an idea, they, they are a small town gas station. Um, so what is being proposed is eight fueling dispensers, which would give you sixteen fueling positions, um, a forty-eight, uh, hundred square foot building, plus a little bit. Um, and then what is being shown for access currently is full access of drive off of, uh, West Main Street, and then a right out, and then right in, left in drive off of Broadway. Um, there was a traffic study done, um, for this development, um, which is part of the reason the M dot drive was restricted. M dot has reviewed that, they are pushing back a little bit on the left end, but we're still working with them in coordination on that. Um, so, we have been having communications with them over that. Um, overall though, um, I know the study did show a slight decrease in level of service, no matter what though, if you put any development in, you're gonna get a decrease at this location. What we are proposing is obviously to keep the, um, drives as far away from the intersection as possible, and only one driveway per roadway. Um, that's the best we can do as far as the traffic perspective on this. Um, if, M dot would agree to it, if we could do some signal timing adjustments, it would also help increase the level of service at this signal, at the intersection. So, just to kind of point that out, um, what we're, for this type of site, trip generation, for example, for in the AM is thirty-nine cars in and thirty-seven out, and for the PM is fifty additional cars in and forty-eight cars out. Um, gas stations are very much a psyching use, so there is quite a few pass-by trips proposed to go to the site. Um, it's not all new trips generated. Um, I know, uh, one of the questions that was brought up was the hours of operation, this is, uh, gonna be a twenty-four hour operation. And part of the reason for that is, the busiest time at any gas station is the morning rush and the afternoon rush, and that midnight shift gives them time to restock and get ready for that morning rush again. Um, and it is actually safer to remain open during those hours than it is to try to close down and reopen. Um, so that is the, the purpose of a twenty-four hour use. Um, there will be four employees on staff at all times, a minimum of four employees at all times on staff. I know one of the questions was the dumpster enclosure material, uh, would be the wellwood fence. Um, in coordination back and forth with discussions, uh, wooden fence was also added along the residential property line, and then also along the school property line to help buffer the use from the adjacent developments, or existing developments adjacent. I know signage, do you wanna go over that after?
We're gonna do that as a separate public hearing.
So I'll leave signage out for now then. Um, and again, if you have any questions, we're proposing twenty parking spaces, um, an underground detention system to accommodate for all the stormwater on site. And if you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer anything.
Thank you ma'am. That moves us to Brian, your report.
Yeah, just to clarify, this is a two-step process.
Yes.
This is a special land use process, where we're not gonna get into too much detail about how many trees are planted, how many, uh, where the stormwater is going, we'll talk about signage because that is a special land use, that's why the agenda says special land use oh three, which is what we'll open a public hearing after I get done talking. And then, um, special land use oh four, which is the signage request. Um, as Mandy said, um, this is a gas station, uh, Casey's with some food service. A gas station isn't permitted use in the highway commercial district, um, subject to the standards in seventy-eight dash five five three respectively. Um, we're gonna review the site plan separately. Um, as Mandy said, the parcels, there's two parcels there, currently owned by working it properties. It would combine to be a total, um, parcel size of one point five acres, and that would, as you can see, be listed as a condition of approval, because as you can see, a standard is a certain lot size requirement, uh, for a gas station in the C two highway commercial district. So after a public hearing, we, we take, we'll take a deliberation, uh, on, on that, and then again, after we talk about the signage request. So the first standard, um, for a gas station is the minimum lot size for a gas station shall be thirty-two hundred square feet. These parts, what?
Thousand square feet.
Thirty-two thousand square feet, thank you, thanks for that. Nope, I apologize, zero miss, alright, um, thirty-two thousand square feet. So this parcel's combined, total parcel size of one point five acre, eighty-five acres for eighty thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet. So that standard is met. Um, the planning commission may establish hours of operation for gas stations to protect the character of land uses in the vicinity. It does say in my staff report, but now we clarified it, it will be a twenty-four hour, uh, seven day a week operation that is similar, I believe exact, uh, to the Shell station to the north, and with pretty much the other Speedway gas station, and also, um, the J and H oil gas station. Um, what I did like to say is that during site plan review, careful consideration should be considered for effective screening, lighting, to the adjacent residential uses, uh, that would be buffering, uh, this property. Um, three, the applicant shall demonstrate, and that standard is met according to staff report. Three, the applicant should demonstrate to the planning commission proper design and licensing measures as required by state and federal statutory and regulatory authority. The applicant has been made aware of this requirement, and will be listed as a condition of approval, uh, for site plan review. So that's pretty standard, uh, procedure for this type of, uh, development. That standard would be met. All buildings, pump islands, canopy structures, and other facilities shall be located in performance with the yard and setback requirements of the zoning district. In the C two, uh, highway commercial zoning district, you have to meet a front yard setback for not just your building and your canopy, and off of Broadway thirty-seven, it's fifty feet, off of Main Street, it's forty feet, 'cause on a corner lot, you have to have that extension. So that includes the canopy, and then you have to meet this rear yard setback of twenty-five feet, uh, on the west lot line, and then, I believe, it's twenty-five feet on the side lot. Those, just conditions, that condition standard is met because of the village's place where it needs to be. Dismant- uh, standard number five, dismantled wrecked or immobile vehicles shall not, stored shall be completely screened from any adjoining parcel outright away. The applicant has no desire to have any immobile wrecked vehicles on site, so that standard is met. No vehicles shall be parked for the purpose of selling, selling or renting vehicles. The applicant has demonstrated no vehicles will be sold or rented on site, that standard is met. Seven, any hazardous materials to be stored, used, or handled on site shall be disclosed by the applicant, and all such storage, use, and handling shall be conducted in accordance with any applicable state or federal requirements. The applicant has demonstrated no hazardous materials to be stored, used, or handled on site. So that, and any written documentation will be provided to the village, um, for verification. That standard is met. Eight, curb cuts for access to a gas station shall not be permitted at such locations that will tend to create traffic hazards, and entrances shall be located at least fifty feet from road intersections. As you can see on the site plan, the, the, um, east entrance that comes in off of Broadway is a hundred and seventy-six feet, that's a right in, left in, and right out, only with the advised site plan. And then also the north entrance, or the west entrance of West Main is a right, left out, right out, and then right left in, and it's about a hundred and eighty feet from the intersection, so that standard is met. Obviously, through site plan review, that discussion that we had with the traffic, um, study is a reason for obviously a concern, but as far as the way the letter of the law goes on this standard, that standard is met. I'll touch on my, my final stack, staff comment after the public hearing, and then I'll go through the staff recommendation following that.
Thank you, Brian. At this time, we're gonna open the public hearing. That moves me down to public comments, before I open the floor. I'm gonna say this. The village planning commission asks that you respect, be respectful of your comments. Please state your name and address when you step up to the podium. Please address your comments to the pl- planning commission and not to the audience. And please be aware that there is a three-minute time limit, and we will give you a one-minute warning. Alright, I'm gonna split the room here, we'll start on the side. Um, I'll start up front, is there, if there's anybody up front, and we'll go back and forth. Come on up, sir.
My name's Kurt Boyd, I live at three six three Vinceford Drive. I don't really care if a gas station, not a gas station. Um, I've had, I've been to Casey's before, they have fantastic pizza, breakfast pizza's awesome. My only concern is the entrance exit off of Main Street, where it is in relation to the Shell station. If they're gonna be close to each other, it's gonna be a lot of, right there, there's not a lot of room right there already. That's my only concern.
Okay, thank you.
Just need to have a key to be in the seat.
Oh, okay, just one second, she got her reset.
Yeah, I might go down to my driveway.
You have a plane?
I don't know.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Uh, my name is Jason Mitchell, I'm at six three nine Sunset Hills. I would strongly, and anybody that I've spoken to about this, I would strongly oppose the, the approval of a gas station dislocation. Um, the size of the village doesn't actually require four gas stations, and at this time, I believe there is a fifth gas station that has been approved, um, but does not have the, um, the financing has not been approved for the building, gas station, at the location of the, the formal location of the front kitchen. Um, just as, uh, so statistically, from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand thirteen, two thousand, there were, uh, there was a twenty-five percent decrease in the number of gas stations across the country. It went from a number of approximately two hundred and four thousand to a hundred and fifty-six thousand. By two thousand fifteen, that number had dropped to a hundred and fifty thousand, which is wide. The land, once a gas station is installed somewhere, the land is very hard to repurpose. Typically, they are left vacant if they close, and the cost, due to the cost of, um, soil testing and removing the tanks and repurposing the land. Uh, I, again, I just don't feel that the traffic is there to necessitate a fourth or possibly fifth gas station within the village. Um, and then also, knowing that it is a general store slash grocery store, and another pizza place, we can have a pizza place in the most recent gas station, it was added on M thirty-seven, the American, or whatever that one is. Um, there's supposedly supposed to be a Little Caesar's in there, and I think that these things would greatly affect the, um, say, the three brother pizzas that's here in the middle of them, and we have, um, you know, we have the marketplace for a grocery store. And, and I just don't feel that, um, that it would be a safe corner to have it at. feel that, um, that it would be a safe corner to have it at. As mentioned, the traffic entering and exiting the Shell station, um, it's already difficult enough during, um, you know, say, school, you know, when schools are let out, things like that, traffic increases greatly, and it just doesn't seem like it is a wise addition to the village.
You have one minute remaining.
That's clear.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Russell, I live at four-four-one, sorry, I didn't hear, Elizabeth, did you say? Yes. I live at four-four-one Bowles Avenue, and I agree with the statements that were just made, like too many pizza places, too many gas stations. I think we need to remember, this is the village, and we have this small town vibe. I came here from Knoxville, and I came here because of this small village feel that you have, and I think that that's getting forgotten. And, and, most people I talk to, if we wanted to live in a big city, we'd be Grand Rapids. We don't want that. We want our sense of community here, and I think it's just, it's too much. We've got too much that is being built, and houses are gonna be built, we understand that, but as far as businesses, we have a good grocery store, you know, and we have plenty of gas stations. Once in a while, we do have to wait, but I never see it where you cannot get gas. Um, just please, think about that. You know, think about what we're losing and what we need to maintain. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dean Fulus, number is four-one-seven West Prince Street. Uh, I'm just more less worried about what my property value's gonna be at after this place involves in it. All the noise, the traffic, it's already bad enough, like I said, it's bad enough with schools out, we can't get out of there, as it is, and I'm just worried about the noise I work through a shit. So the noise, the lighting, and what my value property's gonna be, be in the house on the corner, that's gonna be affected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ethan, first Harold, five-ninety-four Oakville Court. It's my understanding, it's a question for you guys, it's my understanding that you can't dictate what's put on that corner. Is that correct?
Not any more than we can dictate you putting a pool in your backyard, as long as you meet the ordinances.
Okay, so...
The village does not own the property.
Right, so, I mean, you, you, as the planning commission, you know what it's zoned for, but you can't tell somebody, I mean, they could put up a forty-foot tower as long as you let the, and so put up whatever they want. So if these people wanna put a gas station here, they're gonna put a gas station there. Is that correct? Okay. My other question is, given the growth in the area, which is just gonna accelerate, I think, is any concern then given to the fact that eventually that M thirty-seven's gonna be four-lane?
It used to be four-lanes.
Yeah, and what, what happens to all of the setbacks and all of that kinda stuff if, if the M dot comes through and says, "Alright, we're gonna make this four-lane"? Is that a concern? I think it should be. So again, I think all, all of us here probably are pretty much opposed to this gas station moving, but there's nothing really to be done. It's just basically where we're at. Is that correct? No answer, put your hands up.
There's no one else on this side of the room? I'll move to this side. Oh, wait, one more, sorry.
John Shear, two-thirteen Dayton. Uh, I guess I'm concerned for the kids going back and forth to school. Right now, they're on, they go on the side of the road that is being proposed for this gas station, they stay away from the Shell side. Um, but now, if you've got traffic over on the Shell coming and going, and this coming and going, I'm afraid for the kids that they might get, so.
Thank you. Alright.
My name's Jason Noble, I live at five-thirty-five Lincoln Street. Uh, I've been here about eight years. I'm with Bruce, I don't think we can pick winners and losers, and I get all that, we got businesses that are gonna go in, it's a free market. But I'm with Bruce here, that the, uh, I think probably against it mostly because of the traffic, but also because we need to consider the hard facts, like potentially going to a four-lane road, and how is that gonna be affected? I really don't think Casey should be here. I don't think, I think it's the Walmart of gas stations, of businesses trying to be all things to all people, it's gonna undercut, uh, the, the middleville market, which again, free market and all that, they have to compete. However, it will create more of a food desert, which we are already combating, we already have to go to Hacienda or Grand Rapids for a full-fledged grocery store, which is not good for our community, to be in a food desert like they are in some of the cities and some farther out rural areas. I, I disagree with the entire, uh, in and out, the exit and entrance situation, it's damaging to our, uh, to our roads, or, this is not just like going to a McDonald's and staying for twenty minutes to eat. This is in, out, in, out, constant traffic, constant moving, and nobody's resting to participate in the village, or its business, or its food. It's just in and out, and going to create a mess of traffic for our children navigating it, for me going to work and coming home, going to the daycare, everything. I think it's a total cluster mess and should not be here. Thank you.
Any one know something on this side?
We, Michael Morehouse, I live at two-oh-one South Broadway.
Oh, sorry, I'll get, I gotta catch up on this side. Michael Morehouse?
Morehouse, two-oh-one South Broadway. Pretty much almost across M thirty-seven from where this proposed gas station would go. My major concern here is the lighting. I don't want my yard lit up like a Christmas tree twenty-four hours a day. My wife works kind of second and a half shift, so she's sleeping during the day. I wanna be able to sleep at night. I don't need, I don't know how he proposes the lighting to where it doesn't shine distances, but I already saw the repercussions when Shell went in and what it did to the surrounding property, and I'm not looking for that. That, to me, could be detrimental to the house failing. So, that's my main concern. Thanks.
We're heading to it, sorry. Hello, my name's Ellie Burke, uh, this is the lady who wants to speak tonight. Look, everybody here, I have a plethora of concerns about another gas station going in.
Could you state your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, seven-oh-nine Wild Pond, in Missy Ridge.
Thank you.
Uh, my biggest concern is about the effects of our health of another gas station going in, which was confirmed by a study led by environmental health scientists at Columbia University. Uh, they examined the release of vapors from gas station vent pipes, finding emissions were ten times higher than estimated use in setback regulations, used to determine how close schools, playgrounds and parks can be situated to the facilities. Da-da-da-da-da, we found evidence that much more benzene is released by gas stations than previously thought. In addition, even though a relatively short study period, we saw a number of instances in which people can be exposed to the chemical at locations beyond the setback distance of three hundred feet. Gasoline contains, uh, vapors, uh, mostly benzene, which is a carcinogen, which according to the CDC, the major effect of benzene from long-term exposure is on the blood. Long-term exposure means exposure every year or more. Benzene causes harmful effects on the bone marrow and can cause a decrease in red blood cells, leading to anemia. Can also cause excessive bleeding, it can affect immune system, increasing the chance for infection. The Department of Health and Human Services has determined that benzene causes cancer in humans. Long-term exposure to high levels of benzene in the air can cause leukemia, cancer of the blood-forming organs. I don't have anyone else here, I've had cancer once before, I don't recommend it. So anything that I think we can do as a community to lessen the effects of this, I think that we should take a, a hard look at that. Also, as someone else, one of my neighbors here has also noted, what's gonna happen to these gasoline stations? Gas is on the way out, it's not sustainable, electric is coming in, all of the, the automakers are investing in electric, gas stations are on the way out, that's just how it's going to be. Let's see, um, according to studies, we have found fantastic growth rates in electric vehicles between fifteen and sixty percent on a global level.
You have one minute remaining.
Car makers plan to invest more than ninety billion dollars in the shift to electric vehicles over the next decade or so, according to Reuters analysis. I realize that bringing business to a small community is difficult, I realize that, and I'm, I'm not here to inhibit it growth, I believe that we as a village need to grow at a managed and selective level. I think that we should bring good wholesome needed businesses into our community. I realize that that is difficult, but I also don't think that we should just jump the gun and say yes to any business that, that pops in. So I'm asking you, if there's anything at all that you can do about this, please take our concerns in, and, uh, I ask that we continue to grow as a healthy, family-oriented community instead of a gas station. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm ready.
I'm a supporter, I live at nine Market Street, and, um, ever since we heard about this proposal, anybody I've talked to, they're, uh, really a fifth gas station, um, that's not why we moved to Middleville. Um, we live within less than half a mile, I mean, less than a mile, uh, probably just a half mile, um, from the corner, so that would be three gas stations within our area, and where we live, we're kinda down the hill, um, same concerns the lady right before us, fumes in the air, we just don't need it, um, not interested in that. Um, I'm very concerned about the close proximity, um, to the elementary school. Uh, two gas stations right near the elementary school, uh, sorry, but if there's an explosion, that's just way too dangerous for our children. Also, uh, when schools, uh, kids are going to school, coming from school, I've seen them walking, um, they just, it's not good for our citizens at all. Um, my other, um, point, uh, when M dot did a survey saying, "Hey, you know, does Middleville need another stoplight?", they said, "No, we don't." If we don't need another stoplight, why do we need five gas stations? Um, I just, uh, don't think that it, uh, you know, I, people, what I've heard is just like, "Why don't we just call it Gasville, that's what we're gonna do." I've been to Casey gas stations, they are nice gas stations. I just don't think our town, um, I think it's too late for another gas station to wanna come to our town, we have quite a...
Thank you.
Seth?
Yes.
My name is Adam Porter, I live at nine Market Street, and, uh, definitely oppose the project, and, uh, if I'm hearing correctly, that the citizens here really will have no say in what, what, what determined, or they can stop it any way, according to this educated gentleman behind me, he's a pretty good comment, and, and I'm thinking, what are we doing here if they can buy the thing and put up whatever they want, and our council can't even do anything to stop it? Am I correct? Is that true?
We have to abide by the standards that are, that are in the special land use. You gotta remember, this is own commercial, certain conditions, certain requirements uses are only permitted by right, which doesn't require a public hearing. A special land use per the Michigan Zone Enabling Act requires a public hearing, so the opportunity for comments like this because of some of the things that come along. Now, the way it's presented and the way it is, is that there's certain standards that need to be met, and if those standards are met, you know, you abide by that. However, it is the option of the, and I'm not trying to take all your time, which I am, but...
You got fifteen seconds.
Yeah. Take into account a lot of the public comments there, to really consider them. And to say that you guys have no say on that, that is not an accurate statement.
Thank you, Brian.
If there's a way to stop, and I recommend we do that. Okay, this is completely an overbuilt project, which we've got, there's a traffic cluster. Uh, you, as you know, going into, at particular times, is, is, uh, really amazing for traffic, and especially the, the school times, the kids going in and out, and why in the world do we want something right next to Shell, which is already accomplishing what we need? There's already three, three stations in, in town, uh, why would we want anymore? Uh, I've also, I've, I've just heard a bit negative responses, never heard a positive one to anyone I've, I've talked to. Uh, talked about business coming into, to Middleville, Bradford White has brought more ample enough, good, good positive business and growth and, uh, job structure and everything else. Uh, do we want Casey's to be the, the banner, flag, ship, sign, anybody going through to Middleville? It's turned down to, see, here's Casey, it's our, it's our town name now, Casey's or Middleville. And what's, you know, uh, and so where have we, our small town, uh, thing gone to? Um, and so, what I want to know is, are any contracts been made, any agreements been reached, is this already a done deal? Okay, and are we just here wasting our time? I guess that's how sometimes things can work, and so we gotta be care, you know, we need to know those things. Uh, do we need another liquor store in our small town? Okay, for people going through and getting, getting a hold of more liquor stores? Are we expanding too fast? And what do we want to become next? If we have this coming, this is kind of like a metropolis of gas stations, and, uh, once again, it's a completely an overbuilt, um, and so, this is not a positive image for Middleville. And, uh, once again, what about the proposal for accidents right there, and, and children coming in and out and so on? You and I know it's going to be a cluster, and it's not gonna be necessary, and, uh, we need to listen to the Middleville residents, is there any way of stopping it?
Your time is expired.
That is exactly what we need to do, and thank you very much for your time.
So, they have all notes and stuff, I have two post-it notes. So, my name's Adam Chamberlain, seven-two-five Wild Pond Court. I'm glad I got to go maybe last, um, just as a comment on a few of other, other people's comments earlier. So average cleanup, according to EMS Environmental, which is, uh, Eastern Coast Environmental Cleaning, that's, uh, two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars to clean up, uh, a defunct and abandoned gas station. Um, we talked earlier, I heard earlier about, uh, who's responsible for open land. If nobody's owning that land, who's gonna clean it up? When you have five gas stations in town, Hastings, um, has a population that I found of seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirteen. If you divide that by five for potential gas stations, that's one gas station for one-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-two people. Middleville is around three-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-one. Um, you divide, divide that by five, that's one gas station per six-hundred-and-eighty-four people. Doesn't account for any children or families, that's total people. So for families, that's gonna be a much tighter number there. Um, now, if you're thinking growth, um, let's go to Granville. They have within four mile, uh, four within two miles, that is, less, that's much different than what we would have, which would be five in less than one mile. Granville has a population of sixteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-one, and, uh, that's not including all the people that go visit the mall, we don't have one of those here, um, but that is one gas station per four-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-five people. Just based off of maybe, um, business decisions, that's a poor business choice to build a gas station here. Um, and it's just kind of ridiculous to have the, uh, this going in. My other concern is, since I live in Wild Pond Court, um, we're just on the edge, right across Speedway, and my wife and my family go down, um, in front during the construction time. How are we gonna get to, to Middleville? There's no, like, crosswalk, we'll have to go back and out through, instead of just have straight access. It's gonna be, uh, kind of an inconvenience for us. Um, so there's only one crosswalk, and how is...
One minute remaining.
Thank you. And, uh, that's the last thing that I just wanna say, is that that's gonna impede on, uh, our ability to access the town and the village that we live in. So thank you very much.
Did anybody else, like, make a second comment?
Second one? No, go right ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, it's alright. We asked it over a little bit, it wasn't real yet. Hi. My name is Justin Workman, my address is three-eight-five-one Ecker Road in Freeport, Michigan. Uh, if you didn't know that already, it's been posted on Facebook. I'm the current property owner of the proposed site. Um, I myself am a small business owner, uh, my business is different and unique compared to most. I'm in the real estate business. So I started out, I bought five lots for twenty-five-hundred bucks, and I turned around and sold those lots to a builder. I then went and bought a house, fixed it up on nights and weekends, and sold that house for a profit. And I've continued through that path along the way. Along the way, I bought some rentals, such as the... Along the way, I bought some rentals, such as this, and some other property that does have development potential. The one that we're in, that we're talking about tonight and in question, has a ton of development potential. I think everybody can agree to that. It's on the main corner of a main intersection. Something's gonna go there someday, whether it's now or in the future. The nice part about now, and with the proposed plan, is it's not a major draw for traffic. The main use for the gas station is the actual traffic that's siphoning off of M-37 as it is. Casey's is not a small operation. I'm sure if you guys have looked, they're a major player. They own over 2,000 gas stations, and they concentrate in small towns. They know their market, they know their demographics, they understand what it takes to succeed in a market like this. They would not make this effort and try to pick this town if they didn't think they could make it work. They understand we're a growing community. And they think, and they know that they can fit and fill the needs of some of those members of this community. When it comes to vacant land after a gas station, there was an exist, there was a gas station on this existing piece of ground at one point in time. When I was, talked to people in the past, I think there was nine in Middleville...
You have one.
Back in the sixties. So things have changed, as times have moved on, we've gotten smaller, gotten away from them, but they are coming back. And our traffic numbers continue to increase, which drives some of that demographic information. It's not just the village population itself, we have a major and not road that runs through it. So we're moving, I think it's 11,000 cars through the village on a daily basis. And not all of those people need to stop and get gas, but Casey's does have a great food option. We are too small of a community to dig, to draw a McDonald's or a Wendy's or some other fast food, but they have a great restaurant component that can add to some of that as well. If you guys do have any questions for me at any time, even after this meeting, please feel free to ask. I'm a local guy, I'm here, I'm around town all the time, I'm at school events, so stop and ask.
Time is expired.
Thank you so much.
Don't bring it here.
My name is Tracy Gillespie, I'm at 141 Irving Road.
Just a moment. Tracy Gillespie, sorry.
That's okay.
My concern is, I'm, I was...
I'm sorry, I still need to record your name and...
Oh, Tracy Gillespie Gillespie, and your address? 141 Irving.
Thank you.
Middleville's starting to grow, a lot more of mine. We've had a house here for over 35 years. And my concern is, it's not gonna continue to grow, it's, people are gonna leave. You have, I, my building is right across the street from a gas station that used to be there. It's an abandoned building right downtown in Hastings, or abandoned lot. It just stays empty. Whoever owns it, just, it's a parking lot. It's not kept up, it's an eyesore, it's right downtown. Nobody's doing anything with it. You know, we have a lot of restaurants and stores right in there, but there's just this lot. You know, like they said, there's a lot of cost to clean up, and, you know, nobody's gonna pick that up. I don't wanna pay for it. Five gas stations in Middleville, people are moving away, and that corner is, you know, it's a nightmare, as it is. If there's another big business right there in the corner, I'm never gonna come through Middleville. I'm gonna take the back way to Casey's and the back way to Grand Rapids, 'cause I do not wanna get caught up there. I don't want my son to be walking through there, high traffic areas, you know? It's a small town community, you know? It's, like I said, we don't wanna live in the city, that's why we don't live in the city. You know, some of these, one of the, at least one of these gas stations is gonna shut their doors.
Amen.
You know, we can't, we're not gonna be able to, even with all the traffic, I'm living from Amazon and everything else, nobody wants to live in that, nobody here wants to live in that city. So while we've had all this nice growth and everything is building up, downtown looks great, it's not gonna do any good when everybody starts moving away.
Is there any more public comments? If I can come back for around two.
All right.
Can we widen another time limit for this one minute?
Yeah, let's do one minute, that way we can move on to our next one.
You got me, Ellie Burke? Ready?
Just a minute.
Okay, go ahead. So to piggyback off of Mr. Gillespie's comments here, she's totally right. My husband and my family moved out here almost three years ago. And to be completely honest, well, I would love for all of those ripply old houses to be torn down, because they aren't eyesore. That main drag is what people base our community on. We have a beautiful downtown, beautiful, nobody goes to downtown except for Middleville people. If we want people moving to Middleville, good, blue collar, hardworking families, I'm not moving to a town that's got five gas stations without a model. It's just not happening. So if you want good wholesome feelings moving out here, please think about what we're doing as far as how we're going. Again, I'm all for tearing down those houses. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just got a short bird talk.
Just one moment.
Adam Porter. And one thing, I'm piggybacking off my predecessors, we moved down from Gaylord in about 97, okay? And we moved up to Gaylord in about 86. And it was a small town, called the Alpen Community, or whatever it meant, or Germantown. And we moved up, it was a small town, you could get across town, I worked on one side of the town, across the expressway, went, went on the other side, the industrial park to work. And I could get across town. And since we, they started building up the gas stations and the Taco Bells, and this and that and the other, right there in downtown, okay? It's a nightmare to get off on that exit now. You cannot traverse, get in and out of the gas stations, the gas stations, they do have abandoned businesses downtown. And we avoid the Gaylord exit now, that we used to live at. And our house was right downtown in Gaylord. We avoid it. I don't get gas anymore, I don't stop there if I can help it. And, like I said, we moved up, moved to here, from there, and you're proceeding to do the same thing now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Yep, I just wanna add one more thing. What are we gaining by this?
Just a moment. Give me just a moment. Name again?
Elizabeth Russell.
Thank you.
Just, I just, we need to ask ourselves, what are we gaining? Another pizza place? I mean, what happens to our existing businesses? What happens to Three Brothers or Pharaohs, you know? We're gonna start losing the people who've been here and who've been established. Do we need another gas station? What, what happens to the ones we have now? You know, what if, what if they start breaking even? And they're gonna be like, I'm getting out of here, I'm gonna go somewhere else where I can make more money. You know, we gotta think about the downhill effects of this, too.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we're gonna close the public hearing. And that moves us down to special land use, 2019 batch board. Mr. Ryan, your report?
This is a, sorry, special land use for the signs.
Oh, the signs, I'm sorry.
Yep, yep, this is the special land use for the signs, the Casey's general retail. What they're proposing to do is have a ground sign located in the northeast corner of the property. And then have that be 13 feet in height, 10 feet away from the right of way, and the size, the distance, and the total square footage of signs in the C2 central business district exceeds that. As opposed to going through the zoning board of appeals, there is what you could process in the C2 district, our commercial district, via special land use. That's what this request is. You can buy the special land use request with a ground sign, the Casey's ground sign there, and then the wall sign that's on the north side of the building. So, so the request is to have a 13-foot tall ground sign, a distance from 10 feet from the nearest right of way. Total area of a ground sign in that district is 30 square feet, they're looking for about 78 square feet. And then the total square feet of special land use request is about 122, 30, about 122 square feet. So there's standards for a signage request, if you recall, we had one of these a few months ago. It's not quite as lengthy of standards that are required for a gas station itself, but the reason why we broke it up is because we have, you know, special land use for the gas station itself, and then we also have a special land use for the signage requirement. So we have to hold a public hearing after the applicant will get up and talk, and then I will have kind of the idea of some of the standards there. First standard is for section 78, S6, 35D, subsections one and two, is the modification of such requirements justify result in nature, size, density, and location of the special land use of the proposed sign. So this is a strategic location for the sign. Obviously, it's gonna catch a lot of the traffic going eastbound, westbound, northbound, southbound. Yes, there is a very tall, non-conforming sign at the Shell station, that is non-conforming, okay? I can see where that request would be in place. And then the other modification of requirements would not result in traffic or other safety hazards, will not be injurious to the use or enjoyment of a nearby property, and not result in visual, or just light or distraction, or not otherwise result in detriment for the public health, safety, and welfare in general. There's a lot of comments that we've heard during the public hearing, those are a lot of site plan review comments, and we talked, heard lighting, heard traffic, we heard those items itself. Staff's comment on the sign, about causing traffic hazards for the sign itself, it may not directly intrude on the enjoyment of properties, because the area itself, it's a very lighted area. It's, it's the busiest intersection we have in, in the village. However, the ground sign does not conform as an eligible sign type in the C2 district. We've worked very, very hard to amend our sign ordinance. We added a very lengthy public participation process, reaching out to stakeholders. I did not write a staff recommendation on that, but the way it seems, how this prescription and the ordinance is allowed, is that because you have two entrances, there's an option for additional signage that would conform to be a limited two entrances, therefore you have total square footage of signage to be increased. That's for the two, that's for a ground sign or ground signs, and an addition of the square footage for the wall sign. So, that's just a consideration of that request. Obviously, a gas station, you're gonna wanna have pricers, you're gonna wanna have those types of signs, and you wanna make sure it keeps aligned with the corporate detail. But again, there is options, as I state in my staff report, temporary signage is an option, the canopy sign that's on the gas issue canopy that is permitted, and there's some other options there, too. So that's the request, is for having the ground sign to exceed the total area, total height, and distance from the right of way. And then the other request is for total area of ground sign, wall signs on a parcel. Does everyone understand what their, the sign, the two signs that are in relation with that? The walls and the ground sign. I did a nice little rendering there of a guy standing next to the sign. To give you a little bit of scale with this, with this briefcase.
Kinda nice.
To do that, so there. Looks like a casino.
After our committee meeting the other day, we did go back and revisit some of our signage. I just got some of these as I was walking out. One thing we were looking at doing, obviously, I know the ground sign was large, and that was definitely something that a lot of people were crowding upon, and as far as splitting it and having two 30-square-foot signs at each entrance drive, Casey's does not wanna go that route. However, they did look at downsizing the ground sign, which that would be what would be proposed, instead of the 13-foot-tall sign. This one here, it is a total of eight feet tall. I know five feet tall is the limit, but if you look at that, the base on that is two foot eight inches, and then the sign itself, the panel, is only four foot seven inches, which is five feet. If you put that sign on the ground, when we get snow, you don't see it. So it's, it's important to have that base underneath it, so that it is up off the ground enough for visibility purposes. So what we are, we are requesting, instead of going with two ground signs at each entrance, going with a ground sign that would be total eight foot in height, and 46.6 square feet in size. I know the one before was 78.24. So to give you an idea, in relationship, it is quite a bit smaller. The other one was 13-foot tall, this one is proposed eight. And the base on the other one was actually shorter than what this one is as well. It was only one foot nine, so just to kind of give you a relationship of size on that. What we're proposing for the smaller ground sign, and the Casey's lettering on the building, is beneath the 96 square feet permitted for ground and building signage. It's a 90.75 square feet total. So what we'd like to do is amend our special land use to go with the 46.6 square-foot ground sign in place of the 78.24 that was submitted.
So, just a question, is you're asking for a special land use specifically against the ground sign? Distance from the right of way, size? I wanna make sure we have this...
Yes, it is still only 10 feet. In order to set it further back, we are up on that corner, so we can't push it further, we'd be in the pavement. So it would still be the same request as before, just downsizing it from the 78.24 to the 46.6 square feet in size.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the new sign is how tall? Eight foot deep?
Eight foot total here.
In the right of way?
It's, it's not within the right of way, outside the right of way. It's 10 foot outside the right of way.
So, let's still...
Okay. All right. So right now, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Any public comments on this?
On the signs.
On the signs itself, nothing else.
I'm Sarah Boyd, I live at 363 Minster Drive. Through hearing, with the discussions that really, this more than likely is going to happen, what can we do to diminish the signage? From hearing everyone here in town, instead of becoming Gasville, what can we do to not have large signage that is outside of our zoning? Is that something that we can ask for? That, you know, they need to at least be within our zoning to adhere to that, to make that a standard instead? Is that, that's what I would like to see happen. That's a great way to at least mitigate some of this, this gas situation here.
All right. Anything else to say? All right. And more, on just the signs?
Michael Morehouse, 201 South Broadway. Do we know that this sign is not gonna impede somebody turning on this corner? If you have the sign right on the corner, how can you see traffic, pedestrians, et cetera? I'd rather see it taller with a post, not 13 or eight foot tall or whatever, and you stop to do a right on red, and you can't even tell if somebody's in the crossbars. My only concern.
Thank you. All right, if there's no more public comments? Oh, you got one, sir?
Tough question, Jean. Really, a sign, even being small, can be very obnoxious, okay? How high is the sign going to be? How high before the post stops?
Well, this is, this is where we gotta kind of have a discussion here, because the special land use request that was posted is talking about the 13-foot sign. And that, that's what we're considering tonight. And I think, as I get to that, you know, there's, there's rules and regulations on a ground sign, on how tall and large it can be based on the distance from the right of way.
What I'm saying, as far as line of sight, how, when's that thing gonna start? You have a trucker up here that's already 12 feet in the air in his cab, just above, and he can't see what's going on like this if that thing's going. The other thing is, are we gonna be able to put a limitation, say this thing goes through, like it's looking, it's being railroaded through? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not trying to... I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, okay? But is there going to be a flashing programmed sign that's going to have one of these things going around, just like the Golden Nugget out in, out in Las Vegas, okay? And then programmed, you know, with somebody running like this to come in for pizza or whatever, that's going to be distracting to your traffic, okay? True.
No, there's no changeable copy on this, other than the signage numbers for the rest.
Or limited, or limited, I guess is my saying. Is it have to be limited? Can you put parameters on what they can do?
It's not going to be like the church sign that shines so bright you could see it from here, if that's what you're asking.
Yep, I got a response to that. We had a long conversation about signs over the past couple of years, and we spoke directly to your point, sir, of how changeable copy signs can have that impact if they allow animation, change in motion, blinking, flashing. And through the sign ordinances, they're allowed to have a changeable copy sign in certain districts, only so much percentage of said sign, a ground sign, and it cannot be over to change copy at certain type of length, duration, or anything along those lines. Specifically, we talked about animation. So that was kind of alluded to. Yes, these meetings are fun to come to when you have a proposal like this, but we do discuss that at ordinance committee level and planning commission level at these exact moments. So that rule is already in place to make sure that's not a continuation. We specifically talked about that, that we didn't want to become that bright light. You mentioned Vegas, you know, we talked about that.
Concern of that this will be in the future.
Yeah, but there is an option if they want to revise their sign plan to put changeable copy that would meet our code, so.
Okay, thank you.
I did take a step off.
Not trying to cause trouble, this is, this is reality.
Any more public comments on the signs themselves? All right, at this time, we're going to close the public hearing.
I, yeah, I have, I have a final comment. You agree with what I put in the staff comment? Whether you agree with it or not, it's, we obviously knew there's the awareness, the additional gas station, wouldn't yield a lot of comment, whether it's good or bad. But we got to remember, there's the standards that were approved that are outlined pretty specifically as a special land use in this highway commercial district. It's an objective approach. I realize that now that there's a recommendation to approve the special land use request with the findings of fact and a condition, but, you know, after speaking directly with our attorney who cannot be here today, is that there's a lot to digest. And particularly now that there is a different special land use request for a sign that would probably have to be posted again through a public hearing, because if it doesn't meet our regulations, they're going to either have to go through another special land use requirement or a variance process, okay? So after speaking with our attorney, it is kind of, he strongly recommends that there be a consideration that whatever decision the planning commission decides to do on the special land use for the gas station, and how, obviously, the sign is to consider a resolution, whether it's a resolution to craft findings of fact for approval or denial. So that's just a kind of a consideration at this time. Yes, the community is growing, the community is changing. We have seen developments that probably haven't ever thought you would see in the Village of Middleville. And the thing is, that's just the nature of how it's going. Our work tasked with adhering, my job as zoning administrator, is to make sure the rules are followed, give you guys the best report, and we make sure we work with the developer, and make sure that we work with all the concerns are addressed. Yes, there are a lot of concerns for a property like this, but we got to remember, this is planned and zoned commercial. It's planned and zoned commercial. Traffic will always be a concern. It's always going to be a concern. And the village itself, for planning commission, if you remember a few years ago, we did write to MDOT. We did look to see to get a traffic label at M thirty-seven in Empire. We have talked with MDOT about those signaling issues. Some of that is an inherent issue regardless of what I mean here. But just remember, I just want the planning commission to be aware, you know, looking at consistency and a level of what the standards specifically say in the ordinance, or it's not fact.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. So I guess my question to my fellow council members is... Would you guys like to send this to our attorney and have him go over our finding of facts and have this put off until we have all the facts in front of us and we have the finding of facts that we need, push this off to our next meeting? Or, Brian, when would it be?
It would be in December.
It would be in December? Okay.
Now, we have decided, all I'm saying is whichever direction you want. Get an idea of where the commission is having a discussion.
I'd like to hear where everybody is at on this. I'll start at that end. Tom!
I was just curious, the finding of facts, the sign obviously was a surprise.
Yes, yes.
But there is no surprise about the request for a gas station in, you know, Casey's, right? And so I see it as two questions. I don't, I mean, go ahead, Ron.
No, no.
It seems to me, finding of facts and the signs makes sense if you want to have a resolution to hold off, but I don't see what is new relative to the gas station proposal.
Ms. Mike?
Tom's right. I mean, it's two separate spaces for special land uses. The gas station checks all boxes, we're kind of stuck on that. I don't see a reason to put the gas station special land use off because there, it meets our ordinance, it meets our code. The sign, no, 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 no. I would not vote for the sign. It's too big. If I can't see past that sign, I might pick up. I mean, it's, it's in, it's too close to the right of way, and you gave us a print for a sign that wasn't included in the packet. It's just, it's not enough. So I would, I would be leaning towards a resolution to have Mark craft the findings of fact for not saying no to the gas station, but moving it to the attorney to have that crafted for an ordinance or for a motion, and then waiting on the special land use for the sign until we get one that conforms.
You want me to add?
Well, I guess, I think before we move to having, move to the sign, it seems to me that we can have a discussion about the special land use for Casey's being there, because if, I'm new here, okay? So my understanding is this isn't a railroad process, it's an open hearing, and it's a fact finding. And as I read, and again, I'm new, but I've been reading and studying the master plan and ordinances and everything else, and yes, it checks the boxes. But as I read the master plan, it says on page one-four, "Each year, the village planning commission is required to make or give advice on zoning decisions, while each decision must be decided on its own merits." One compelling area of information is what does the master plan say about the property? And then it goes on to say, "The plan, once adopted by the planning commission, is the commission's holy grail regarding land use decisions." And so that's, you know, what I was basing, how I studied the master plan. Then many pages later, chapter fifteen, page thirteen, there's a diagram on page twelve on this corner, and again, this was discussed long before I was here, Plaza Middleville, but for, I've only been on this committee a few months, but anyway. Page fifteen thirteen says, "The building on this corner should be very distinctive in a traditional style storefront. If done properly, this corner building could create an extremely positive community image." And maybe I'm reading too intent to it, but it seems when I read the whole page, the intent was that this would be additive to the community. And, you know, while I actually did some research on Casey's corporation, I'm very impressed at which I invested in their stock a year ago. It's up seventy-five percent. And it's two thousand seven hundred, two thousand one hundred forty-seven or something like that. And did study their history, I'm very impressed, actually, the institutional stock is, you know, gives them excellent ratings for management and everything else. So, you know, you can't fault them there. But I fail to see what it adds to our community. When we have four places that sell pizza, we're going to have a fourth gas station, we already approved that before it came on, and not the, you know, it's just, it's history. And we have five convenience stores already. While I think Casey's is a fine enterprise, I fail to see how it's additive to our community. So from my view, reading the master plan, I do think that, at least for myself, there's a basis for voting no, even though I think it's a fine organization.
Marina?
Well, I think we should split the decision as far as pulling up with signage dependent, or maybe move forward with the decision for the gas station today. Depending on that decision, then we'll know if we need to kind of obtain the signage. And then I guess my opinion as far as the gas station, it's been repeated, you know, with everybody here, we don't really need another fifth gas station. It's going to bring competition to our existing businesses and possibly drive them away or a business, and we don't want that in our community. Middleville is a small town, and I've lived here for twenty years, and I like it here, and I'd like to stay here, and I'm sure everybody here would like to stay here in this small-town village. And part of the master plan, I pulled, as Tom did, I pulled something from the future land use section in the master plan for the M thirty-seven corridor. And most of M thirty-seven frontage will be a special designation commercial, a category for planned use that will require managed road, road access, heightened urban design and site standards, all intended to create a functional, safe, and visually pleasing urban environment and street space. And I just don't see that with this enterprise moving in in that corner. We've already got school buses in the mornings and the traffic, obviously, and we could use maybe another left turn light in that corner to help with the current existing issues. I mean, just in September, there was an article in the Hastings Banner about the traffic on M thirty-seven and congestion. And that little stretch of M thirty-seven from M six down through Hastings has a volume of ten to twenty thousand cars. This was from two thousand seventeen, average daily traffic, so it's increased since then. And just in that little road section, so is it going to be fuel tankers delivering gas to Middleville? And now we're going to have tankers trying to pull in and out of our traffic with our existing school buses and daily drivers that are already here? So I'm, I'm leaning against it. Regardless of, unfortunately, that, you know, it does meet the standards, there are secondary issues that impact the community that we have to think of too, and trying to maintain a standard in the master plan. So that's my opinion.
Sue, what do you think?
Well, we need to deal with the facts and not our personal opinion. That's our job as a planning commission. It's not our, on that level, we're to deal with the facts as they've been presented to us. And they have met the criteria in many areas. However, the concern is, right now, we're dealing with a signage, and I think that's two different issues out of one. But we need to take the personal part out of our part as a planning commission and just deal with what we've been given to deal with. And, and, and we are at the final say anyway, it goes to the village council.
No.
No, we're the final decision, it don't go anywhere.
Not any special land use.
No, not for long.
No. This is all part, this is part.
Jason?
I'll speak first to the sign special land use. As some of you already know my opinions on signs, capacity, planning permissions on dirtfields, I, I am, I am almost against any sign that is outside of our sign ordinance. The amount of time and effort we put into that, this planning commission and the zoning board of appeals does have a pretty recent precedent of turning down signs outside of our sign ordinance. As far as the special land use for the gas station itself, I, we do have a master plan, we are zoned. I have a concern about a government telling a landowner that what they can and can't build in, in something that is a permitted use in the zone for the entirety of the zone. So it's, we have standards for a reason, it's a permitted use in the zone. I would feel that a, this government entity telling somebody that they can or can't put something in if they follow all the standards. So I, as much as you might not like the result of the development, I, I don't see, if I wanted to build my house seven feet from the line, but it was fluorescent green, it'd still be the standard and have my fluorescent green house. That's where I'm at.
Thank you. Fran?
As for signs, I'm with Jason. I've rewritten the sign ordinance three times that I've set up here. It's as strong and as tight as it can be, and we need to hold people to it. We aren't going to have billboards in Middleville. That was always something I kept in my mind. No, no need for it. It's a gas station. It's got a price on it. You're not advertising anything else. They'll see that whether it's three by two or thirteen by ten. It's the same. As for the, the special land use, we put a lot of time into the master plan and our future land use, and what Tom alluded to. And I think that a finding of fact is environmental, it's affecting our environment of the people, this traffic flow, that type of thing. I think that can be a finding of fact against this. I don't know what MDOT says. They gave us a three hundred and forty-page traffic study. What's MDOT, they have to say with this? Do we have a letter from MDOT coming back with information? That's what I want to see. I want to know what they see. I want to see their opinion on that traffic study. Because if it impacts us that much, and we have our land, our future land use, special designated area on M thirty-seven, then the site can be flipped, we can have a driveway that goes out to First Street, they own that property, it can be done, we can reroute some of that traffic, therefore, people going to other neighborhoods don't have to touch M thirty-seven. I can't see putting a left turn in a westbound lane, kind of kitty a corner in between the two shelves, right, entrances right now. I just, I, I've almost gotten in accidents with, with buses and all that. So I would like to see this held off tonight. I'd like to see what MDOT says about this traffic study. They're suggesting, oh, well, MDOT can just readjust the lights. Well, can they? We need to know these. I know they have to help us out, ease the current road intersection. But for a company from out of state to come in and say, well, your Michigan State Department of Transportation can help us make this better, without an answer from them, I can't wait for this until I know that information.
Thank you. My turn. Honestly, I feel as if there's too many unanswered questions. I, I'm sorry, I sit up here, I... I, I'm sorry, I sit up here, I understand everyone's feelings. Trust me, before I was here, I was out there. My name says it all. I've been a part of the village for a while now. I understand. Personally, I agree with everybody else. I would really like to see what Mark has to say.
So, that's, I don't want to interrupt you.
No, you're good, go ahead, I'm done.
So, there's that option.
Yep.
Is to, you could postpone, postpone it. And as you can make that motion to postpone and get the more information because we, there's a lot to digest here. For the gas station special land use, the ordinance says you have to have at least one public hearing. You can also hold another one, so if these, these multiple people that have came here can come back again and offer a public comment, that is an option that we, we have.
Yeah.
On that. That's what's kind of there. As far as the special land use for the signs, from what I'm hearing is that we can't really make a determination because of requests as we change. The way I, the way I would proceed is that we look at it as an amended special land use request, confirm with the attorney on the posting requirements. And then if we have to have a public hearing on that, we hold a public hearing based upon the fact that it's prescribed in the ordinance, you can go outside the rules that are prescribed in the ordinance through a special land use approval, because this is a different request. It is a reduction, so it's worthy of going through that process itself. That's where staff's consideration for that special land use request is all. Questions remain, as some of our commissioners have mentioned, remain unanswered.
Yes, yep, there's just too many questions. Fran brought up a great point about M dot, you know, he sent us the three hundred and some page folder. Unless you're trained in reading those kind of reports, how do you decipher it? You know, just, well, I think we put Mark to use.
Yep, okay. And then it would be the goal after we have that is to come back in December, and we would like to see a vote taken at that meeting. Is that kind of what?
Yes.
The goal of that is to make sure we don't, this doesn't push out for too much longer?
Yep.
Yeah, I don't want to see anything drag out.
I don't want to keep you guys wait in limbo, you know? I understand it's something that's been up in the air for a while. And I don't want to keep you guys, I don't want to keep the people of the village in limbo, you know? We'll send it off to our attorney, we'll get the information we need, and yes, December.
So, right now, we're not of, as a whole, we're not leaning one way or the other, we're just leaning for more information and making decisions at that time?
If that's what I'm understanding from everyone who's yet.
I'm just wondering if we requested an M dot review of the other two traffic studies we had done, for seeking consistency.
As far as the other traffic studies?
We had two other gas stations.
Yes.
We've had two other traffic studies, we're both, and those reviewed by M dot?
They were required, man.
Required to adopt review. That's what I'm asking. I am all about consistency. We're equal for everyone that comes through that door, be it a landowner, homeowner, or business.
I'll verify that.
Do we need that for anyone?
Probably a motion to postpone.
Anybody?
I'll make a motion that we recommend the special land use for Casey's general store be reviewed by the village attorney and brought back to a public hearing for the December planning question.
All right, we have a motion to postpone the special land use for Casey's. Elaine, do we need a roll call?
We can do a roll call, just to be comfortable.
Controversy.
I don't know how to vote, because my consideration was, so I vote no, and I continue. M dot report.
Do we have the attorney approve when we do the M dot traffic study?
I just want clarification.
Yeah. I want to do.
What additional information would you like to see?
The findings. What do you write? I mean, the M dot is wonderful.
I think the attorney review would be sufficient, because if the attorney deems that M dot needs to give us a report on the report, then that'll be what has to happen.
You can specifically ask that.
Well, that's up to staff to handle right there. I just want the attorney to review the site for the special land use.
Can I say? We've already submitted to M dot, they've already in the process of reviewing it right now. We have no problem providing their review to you. We've been going back and forth with them a little bit, because they wanted some clarification on something in the study. So, excuse me, sorry. They didn't have any major issues, the only issue they might had was the left end, and they wanted some more clarification on that movement specifically. That came in yesterday, so I didn't have much time, honestly, to provide that information yet. So, we're responding and coordinating with them, and we will happily provide you guys the findings from them when we get the final coordination done.
This would also give an opportunity to either retract or amend the special land use application for the signage.
Correct.
And get us updated plans for the site plan review.
So, you know, there's a lot of addition, the motion could say to table it, to request additional information.
We don't table, right?
All right, postpone.
We already have the motion with support on board, though.
Yes, we do.
So, this one has to get voted down to change it.
Be amended.
But I can't amend somebody else's motion.
Where's your motion, Mike?
I'm content with an attorney review, they're already having M dot amend or give them clarification, so I'm convinced that that will be included in our review with the attorney. I don't feel the need to call that out eventually, because we did not require this, as I remember, of any of the other two stations.
Sue, are you still willing to support? Any more discussion?
I request a reading of the motion.
A motion by Kramer, support by Reeve, to recommend that special land use to nineteen oh-three be sent to attorney Mark Donaldson for review and brought back to a public hearing in December.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Yes, please. Tom DeVries?
Yes.
Yes.
Maria Augustinas?
Yes.
Amanda Polin?
Yes.
Sue Reeve?
Yes.
Jason Holzhousen?
Yes.
And Mike Kramer?
Aye.
That's seven yes and zero no.
Just waiting for somebody else to catch it.
All right. Thank you. At this mo, at this time, we're going to adjourn for five minutes, and we will pick up on our next special land use. Much more than motioning.
So, Mike Kramer, the sign, I mean, if I can't see from a pickup truck, there's a lot of cars coming out, and it's kind of close to all the person that's sitting in the intersection to be able to see that.
Because that's just how it's described.
All right, yes, yep. It's usually posted in eighteen oh-three.
It's just kind of how it's described in the ordinance. Some things are special land uses, some are normal.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Yes, it's usually the first two days of the year, but because of the election yesterday, we had to shift to elections. You can usually plan on Southern Craig first year, okay? Thank you. Yep, no schedule. I don't think it's a, I get my homework, it's red, it's blue.
Yeah, I didn't catch it when it changed, because I don't break the first class.
Right.
But.
There were two corners that you had a front deal, two, yeah. It will be banned.
I would go to say they had this law, then maintenance is going to be discussed. They have to have a pass. And that is going to be very, very key. So, this may, the rights of your, I don't know.
Some of the houses.
Is your power to write?
I'm wanting to go to the city.
Two of the right side of the road.
And they dropped it all. So, Reeve was actually caught in just like sign review.
I've been on the zoning board.
So, every development was written here, and I was, because of paper purge and not dray. So.
I can have.
I have a person that's back. There's a lot of demand for houses right there, they try to fill it, because this is the same building, right? We're just, it's part of the back there. And we hope to, just, we're going to do it. So, we're, so, and we're, so.
My husband needs to work in five, he should work. He's five, he's two. Yeah. Yeah.
I want to do this.
Yeah, it's.
Yes. So, I'm just.
Yeah. Yeah. My little tears.
So, it goes, it goes. And then after they fill on five oh five, so if you come to the five oh five.
I don't care about the village.
I don't know. So, that's why I thought. They have, they have, they have, sorry.
And they, they. They're, they're.
I don't know. Yeah.
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 They don't have a lot of time. Um, um, this is why I, this is why I.
Not really. Well, I highly suggest, but I'm glad you said it's valid, because that was, you know, they bring in the plan like that. We don't get like, like, well, we just get one.
I might have to answer.
You guys call us, yes.
Yeah. Then I, I talked to Mark.
Thank you.
I understand. Then I, I talked to Mark. Okay, I want it.
Thank you.
I understand.
You can see the doctor. How much time we have.
I don't know. Wait for post on Facebook.
Fixing it.
I thought our names.
Almost.
So, I don't have a vote on that.
All right, after action. Just to make it reasonable, I'll say. I have to, I have to, I have to. Because she was at the houses, to take them away. So. You're so, you're so, you're so. The board come out and plug in. I want my reflection. I have to say.
Yes, I'm not. But you're going to.
Well, I was going to say, I don't, this looks, it's up to you.
But you got to drink back. Where are you at, Russell? Pretty nice.
It was. Ryan took the point, I mean, it was not, you know, nevermind.
Yes.
I can imagine. I said, look, I said, I want this done. I personally, there's some. Jesus. Just want to say. It's, it's. You're going to be sad.
I hope you're right, I hope you're right. Go get it out. Yeah, that's like that.
I'm worried.
Yeah.
Okay, so, she's got, can you, it's really.
Um, so, I don't know. I'm also.
I live in, I live in.
I mean, this is the, this one?
No, 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 there's, well.
Um. Oh, that's you guys. Yeah, I was saying to Beth. Maria, nice to meet you. I was feeling like I was campaigning.
So, the house, I would, I would say. The house was already built.
I don't know. So, I want to move this, and then.
Something like that. I would talk to Brian.
Okay, I have a, I have a. You want to make the motion?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
It's time to make a statement after.
Yep.
I'm good. Just, make some kind of statement.
You told me seven thirty.
I'm not always.
It's like nine o'clock.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
This is totally everything that you're covering.
Yeah, we need to go to sleep.
This isn't, this is, like, a lot of houses.
Alpha medical, is that what you're calling for? I don't think so.
Right. Quick question.
Oh, right.
I clenched it all the way out. Where?
Just so I can kind of get an idea, because everything's kind of looking, I have no idea what's going on.
Mike, can you explain?
This view, this view is from the east side of Grand Rapids Street at ground level, so about six feet off the ground, if I'm looking over there, this is what I see.
Okay, so this is, this is where the.
This is the. Correct. And this is.
Same with this one?
This one is a higher location, if you were in second story house. Looking over.
Okay, understood. Just didn't know what's named.
There's one in Paw Paw. I powered my NASCAR.
Amanda, what's that?
We're at Lakeview Hospital all the time in Paw Paw.
Yeah, you got it. All right.
I got a motion for you, Amanda.
You got a motion for me?
I do.
Awesome sauce.
I move that, we, I move site plan twenty nineteen oh eight back to site plan committee.
All right, we have a motion to move site. Oops, I'm sorry, I thought she was here.
Your friend.
All right.
I did.
Jason made the motion, Mike made support.
Site plan needs to have recommended. Oh, I forgot, this one.
No, this is the, the site plan for Casey's.
And it's like, like I said, it's a two-step process, but if we're not making a decision on the.
Well, and I didn't get plans for lighting details, I didn't get the plan with the amended air compressor. But, yeah, there's, I'm missing some pieces.
There was a lot of changes.
I thought I settled this out.
I don't have the drive arc for the fuel trucks.
Will you get? Yeah, I saw it.
You saw it?
Yeah. Documents in one mail.
I know, I got it on my, my batteries dead.
That's right, we're going to move it back to.
We'll move back.
Yeah.
All right. We have a motion, we have support to.
Site plan twenty nineteen oh eight.
Twenty nineteen oh eight, I wanted to make sure I'm seeing right, one here. Back to site plan committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Alright. Oh. She's locked out, girl. Yeah, please. Alright, that moves us down to special land use twenty nineteen dash five. Bradford White's still receiving expansion. Yeah, way back there, ew. Thanks.
I might as well put those down.
Alright. Would you like to come up?
Sure.
Sure. Well, your other partner there didn't do... I'm sorry, take this.
He wore the wrong shirt.
Oh, he did?
You were calling it Mike.
Alright. Do you have a special land use for Bradford Whites for your dealers?
Yes, um, it's kind of the next phase that we've come up with for, uh, expanding the facility. It really is, I think, uh, safe to say it's starting the last large construction project, um... In that, in that area. It is a special land use permit because of the height of building, because it's planned as a two-story facility. So, we have the option of putting a powder coat paint system on the second floor. Uh, the first floor, predominantly metal processing and steel receiving. Currently, the trucks drive an alleyway between the buildings and then come up through the building to deliver. This is gonna provide some access running north to south, uh, improve the traffic flow. It'll allow us, it includes a traffic turnaround where the current, uh, security building stands, the old credit giving, if you will. Uh, so that, uh, that'll be kind of the final piece to get the steel trucks off of Grand Rapids Street. So, our plan is, is that we won't have any truck traffic at Grand Rapids Street. You know, it's a nice ordinary circumstance, uh, because of something happening on Criminal Drive or Criminy Road or something. So, um, as I said, it's a two-story building, approximately fifty-three thousand square feet on the first floor. Uh, and twenty-eight thousand square feet on the second floor. It fills in the existing parking area, that's in part why we've acquired so much property and converting for parking. With that, uh, the intended, uh, you know, growth of the facility, we're probably looking at another hundred and fifty to two-hundred employees over the next year, year and a half. Um, so, we'll be up in that fourteen-hundred hourly, fifteen-hundred hourly employees, a couple hundred salary employees across varying shifts. But that particular, when we're all done and the equipment's moved in, it'll probably be a two-shift operation. And, uh, now hopefully, you know, our plan all along is with the parking situation is to try to improve the traffic flow, to handle the increased workforce. And, uh, improve the, uh, traffic flow on Grand Rapids Street. You know, previously, we've done traffic studies, uh, to try to help determine if these were the right moves to be making for the workforce and for neighborhood. So, um, consistent with what we've done before, all of the screening and everything, uh, are, you know, we're very focused on not having so much of an industrial look, it's having more of an institutional look. Uh, where somebody might mistake it for a, a school or a hospital or something like that, because we're sensitive to the appearance, uh, from Grand Rapids Street in particular. You know, we, we continue to, around the facility, continue to add trees and things like that to try to help screen as well as, uh, uh, try to add... Add some, uh, better, uh, you know, environment for the walking trail and things like that. So, that's kind of been our mode of operation for the last few years is looking at it in a holistic picture of how we, how we continue to make it look better and better. And, and meet all of, of course, the stringent requirements of the zoning ordinances, everything.
Alright, well, thank you, sir. Mr. Brian.
Alright, so this is similar to what we had, is a two-step process. Right now, and Mike touched on a lot of the site plan discussion, but we're just gonna talk about the special land use, and that is the building height specifically. Because the ordinance in zoning arts allows for building height in the I-two heavy industrial district, uh, to be approved, uh, by special land use, subject to the planning commission, that's greater than forty-five feet. So, the request is to have the steel receiving to have a building height reaching about sixty-seven feet eight inches with a proposed stair tower of seventy-six feet eight inches. Uh, part of this standards are reviewed per section seventy-eight dash forty-four, uh, no, excuse me, seventy-eight dash five forty-four, uh, that are standard for all special land uses that are not specifically, um, allowed. I have, I have comments on that, I don't wanna have to go into too much detail, a lot of them do not really apply to this specific position, uh, request. But if those that were on the planning commission two years ago, in twenty thirteen, there was a special land use request for extension of the building height, I wanna say sixty-three feet, sixty-two...
And sixty-six.
Sixty-six. Well, in any event, this is, this is a different request, so there is precedent being set for this building height to be approved as a special land use. One of the number-one concerns, obviously, as the building height increases, are the, are the public, um, services gonna be able to be supportive of that? Fire, fire protection mainly is another one. So, we have, uh, you know, a review on that, particularly with, you know, making sure the fire chief is okay with that. Um, obviously, a height of a building as it goes up, it's gonna make it look, it's gonna seem, is that gonna be too, uh, out of harmony with the existing, um, neighborhood? Well, Bradford White is a very established land use. Um, it's been, we've seen countless site plans over the past years, and as Mike alluded to, it's gonna match the continuation of the exterior facade materials to make a more institutional look, and it is set back quite a ways. So, some of the standards that I would, um, discuss is the first one, the size, character, nature of any buildings or structures to be erected. Located on the lot shall not create a social, economic, or visual conflict with the adjacent land uses or immediate neighborhood. As we've seen through the past couple of years, there were some houses on that side of Grand Rapids Street, they're no longer there. They are now parking, it's all kind of a part of the whole plan, um, to increase, uh, security. And then obviously, for the steel receiving, the function of it requires a height that, that this needs to meet. Um, so, the comment is, the proposed additions will blend in with the existing Bradford White complex and will not create conflicts with adjoining properties. Setback, uh, much greater than the required setback in that district is, and again, is established land use. Um, two, the proposed use of land, buildings, or structures shall not create substantial adverse or hazardous environmental conditions for subject property owners of the surrounding neighborhood. Um, the building height will not affect light, environment, noise, or their aspects. The building height exceeds what is normally permitted with the tallest portion being kind of stepped back a little bit, uh, and not imposing on neighboring residential properties across Grand Rapids Street. I do realize right now, there's a lot of construction, we don't realize right now, there's a lot of construction going on, and there's parking lots, and there's a lot of clearing. But you gotta remember, those site plans are not completely finished through the screening and fencing process. So, that will be established, that was part of the approved site plan. So, again, that, I wanna make sure that that's clear from those that would be receiving the notice of saying this building, as you can see on, on, obviously, the renders. Um, the other applicable, um, standard is, safe and adequate water supply and sewer disposal facilities shall be provided by state and county regulations to be compatible with existing systems and future development. Um, we can discuss this a little bit more at the segment review, but I believe the building height will be serviced by a protect, a proper fire protection line with a loop system. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, again, as buildings increase in the square footage height, gotta make sure we're safe for the workers, everyone that's in there, because that's obviously a number-one, uh, major concern. And then, um, the eighth standard that will be applied is, the proposed use shall be consistent in intent of the purpose of the zoning district, which is proposed in the intent of the overall, overall purpose of this chapter. So, the I-two industrial district is to accommodate heavy industrial development and provide for some early development. This is, again, is a continuation of a heavy industrial use, established use. Um, the site plan itself shows a lot of change to the, um, movement of vehicles, steel trucks, um, tractor trucks with some of the closures of Lafayette Street. Um, which is still remaining to be seen, but as far as it goes, this is taking a lot of the steel trucks and taking them off local residential streets primarily. So, that's inconsistent, uh, with trying to maintain where your activity does not conflict with your existing residential. You know, so it's part and parcel. But then, again, going back to the building height specifically, special land use, it, staff's recommendation is to approve this special land use, and then it meets all the standards in that section seventy-eight dash five forty-four for special land use in the I-two heavy industrial district.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there any couple of comments on this?
State you like? Maria Thornton?
Thornton?
Yes. Seven oh one Grand Rapids Street?
Thank you.
Um, so, going back to what was mentioned, um, the traffic on Grand Rapids Street is a little ridiculous. Um, I've probably the past year or so have been hearing their trucks at seven AM, starting with the dump truck this morning at seven. Is that really necessary? Can it not be pushed back to, say, eight, when there's more kids going to school? My husband works third shift, he sleeps during the day. Um, all their cement trucks, all the stuff they had tearing down all those houses across the street, he could not sleep, so we all have issues with that. Um, there's employees peeling out of there when shift changes, um, with the added traffic of the construction. Um, my son has to be home and out the door, back out at four-ten to make to hockey practice, and we have a hard time getting home because of all the traffic going on there. Um, our street is a mess, it's not clean, it's constantly busy, there's trucks coming out all the time. Um, probably all summer, my house would vibrate, literally, you could stand in my kitchen and you can hear dishes and mirrors vibrating in my house all day because of this. If I had known about this two years ago when we bought our house, we would not have bought our house. That's how bad it's gotten. When is this gonna be done? It's just, they have stuff going on all the time.
Yep.
And it's never ending. I wake up at four-thirty now, because I know they're starting at seven. I can't sleep. Nobody can. I'm not the only person on my street that feels this way. It's a little out of hand, I think. Do they really need this much parking space? Could they not have built up instead of out? What is this doing to my property values? Am I, am I gonna be able to sell? Who wants to live across from a parking lot?
You have one minute remaining.
I'm... Thank you.
Any more public comments?
John Shear, two thirteen Dayton. Uh, is there going to be an exhaust fan on top of this building also? That sounds like a jet plane landing and taking off constantly, except for maybe a few hours on Sunday. And also, how many parking places are you eliminating by building this? And where do you plan on putting more parking to accommodate what you're taking away? And as to the vibration, constantly?
Yes.
And it goes before seven o'clock?
Yes.
Um, the trucks in and out.
We cancel.
Our windows just vibrate all the time. So...
Thank you.
Hi. Justin Lindsay, eight oh five Grand Rapids Street.
Did you say Lindsay?
Yep. I just, that view, the rendering, is exactly what I see out my front window, or will see potentially, uh, whenever this project is done, hopefully, it would be soon. Um, the vibrations, you got drywall coming off. Um, the previous tenants or the previous owners of our home, we bought last December, repainted, redid the inside, in the course of the year with all the truck, truck traffic and a lot of vibration, got a lot of cracks in our drywall. Uh, I like the Bradford Whites here. I support them being, they've done a lot for the middle though. Brought a lot of business here, brought a lot of homes here, a lot of people move here for that reason. I'm concerned, one about traffic volume going in and out for the safety. Um, I'm glad to hear that they're gonna be moving more of the steel trucks going in the Crane Road.
Conference.
Yep. Um, I'm concerned about my property value. It might on paper look like the value's fine, nothing's changed with it. But if I have an open house on my home and they look out the window and they see that, that might impact somebody's decision on buying. And also affect the price of what I wanna sell my home for. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
I have one more question, is that okay?
No, no, no. Uh, Brandy McCully? Brandy McCully, five eleven Grand Rapids Street?
Thank you.
Um, is this more of a, a self-standing building, or is it attached to the actual structure?
It's an addition to the existing building.
Is it gonna be an addition? So, is it more towards the north part of where this new entrance is?
I'll show you in a week.
Okay.
I probably...
Thank you, I'm sorry.
This is Lafayette Street.
Okay. Okay, so the old bird shack is where, kind of the middle?
It's behind that, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I have one more comment.
Okay.
John Shear? Um, traffic, we can sit in our living room and on Paul Street and Dayton, nine out of ten vehicles do not stop at the stop sign there. I mean, they, some of them don't even hesitate, but we can just sit there and watch them. Every time there's a shift change, no hardly anyone stops at the stop signs there. So, I'm afraid some, there's gonna be accidents, because some of them zoom right through.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Any more public comments? At this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Um, that moves us down to Commissioner Liberation Decisions.
I'm forwarding your not stopping concern on to...
I've talked to them two about it.
I gotta go.
Can you, can you put a guy on Grand Rapids Street too? Cause nobody goes twenty-five. Like, let's be honest.
I've often wondered why they haven't moved the traffic speed control thing back over here.
Yeah. My kids are not allowed to go in the front yard, because of all the Bradford White people peeling out of there at fifty. Like, I can hear them at shift change when they're screeching their tires out of that driveway.
As much as we would love to be able to control each individual driver, we can't.
Could we do a...
Bradford White can't, but there are long-term plans.
Could we do speed bumps or something along where it's twenty-five?
Well, that would be nice.
Before it changes or some, something.
Do you like the freshly plowed roads?
I, I'm fine with speed bumps, as long as it stops the people going an insane crazy speed on that street.
I like not spending a ridiculous amount of your tax dollars on new blades for the snowbowl.
While we pay enough in tax dollars, we think we can afford it.
We need to get back to what's in...
We need to get back to what's in front of us.
As far as the height of building, it's consistent with, like, there, the research center that's in our construction, previous building heights, um, fire chief has made his comments and Frank Lloyd has, uh, accommodated our fire chief.
The addition of a second stair tower and let riders in both. I'm content with it.
The, um, the loss of the parking spaces was already accommodated with the new blocks, correct?
Part of the old block.
Yeah, because it's fourteen hundred employees.
Attention.
Yeah.
But you told me they're gonna put more parking where there isn't parking now.
I think.
There are, there are different ideas to post. Nothing's been submitted to the.
No, as far, yeah, as far as the special land use district, I'm good.
All right. Anyone else?
I'm with Jason on that, but the one in the public comment that resonates the most is the one about the worrying, the noises, um, still there.
Uh-huh.
Mm-hmm.
And if it's gonna double it, then I think we're gonna have some, some little issues, so.
Yeah, the vibration's a concern because that's not supposed to be leaving sight, so that would be something to look at.
Yeah, I'm not talking about vibration. I'm talking about the existing sound problem that we had that was written into a condition on a previous plan.
I haven't heard it in a while, the one that I was here, so.
I had.
Yeah, I live a mile away and I can hear it.
Sunday night, it really starts to resonate because we don't hear it so much on Saturdays. But when it comes back up on Sunday, then we seem to hear it a lot. But, um, yeah, different nights every week. That's something we really have to look at. Um, this particular special land use has nothing to do with that issue. Let me just clarify that. I'm just mentioning that was a public comment that we definitely still have open.
Would this facility add more noise to the existing noise?
If they put a powder coat system in there, you're gonna have exhaust fans up there, aren't you?
Exhaust fans, but they sit so far back to the middle of the building that they won't pose. The sound that is being heard off of Dayton Street, I believe, is a welded exhaust for the maintenance department. And we've got a plan to try some different things. We did do an independent sound study around the facility to find out where we were and establish a baseline. And there's a couple areas where we're about three decibels over what the, uh, what the zoning ordinance or I guess you'd call it a zoning ordinance requires, which I think is fifty-five decibels, uh, when we're adjacent to residential properties. So that's what we're actively working on is to try to better contain those sounds. And the vibration specifically has been compaction in the parking areas because of so much.
Is it a construction activity?
Yeah.
Or is it a use activity?
It's construction activity.
Cause if there's construction activity, that's inherent with everything that kinda goes on. If it's a use, industrial use, that's when that ordinance really starts to kick in that's in there that we've discussed. Especially when you, as you alluded to, you know, noise, sound, vibration cannot leave, uh, certain property to adjoining property. And noise, we've talked about this in the ordinance committee.
Yes.
Uh, with that decimal level, we've also talked about time of day of it. That is a lot of things we can discuss site plan review wise, but you know, when we talk about the special land use, that height, that is a concern. You can impose a statement of saying maybe there should be, uh, inspections, quarterly inspections that are some of those lines of noise after it's being.
After it's been done.
Or at least.
We've already initiated. We did our first sound study.
Okay.
On those lands. June, July.
Yep.
And we'll be doing additional sound studies, probably two per year to see what they give.
Because I guess the question is, you know, if the building is gonna, say it doesn't require a special land use and still remitting the noises, you know, then it's still a condition of site plan review. Does that make sense?
Is the noisy mission governed by the zoning requirement of fifty-five decibels?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you.
What was the first floor, first floor production of this floor?
Steel receiving.
It's actually.
Processing.
Yeah, it's actually relocation of a piece of equipment that's within the building and another piece of equipment like it.
Yeah, so there's no production on the first floor. The second floor is where the.
No, just processing.
If we do anything.
It's done.
Right.
If we do anything on the second floor, it's planned as a powder coat system for metal parts.
Is that gonna smell?
No. It doesn't emit any fumes.
I was just wondering if that contributes to the vibration.
The vibration is the big rollers when they're contacting the soil that we keep bringing in to raise the grade up.
Okay.
So that is strictly a construction.
Are we safe to say that that's pretty much done?
No.
No.
They haven't torn down the storage units yet.
No, there will be more vibration that goes on, but it's, it's definitely not every day. It's only.
Yes, it is every day. I live across the street.
All right. I, we really need to do this, like, special land use. Anybody else have any comments on that?
I'll move that we approve site plan twenty nineteen oh five.
Special land use.
Special land use.
First.
Twenty nineteen oh five. Uh, the Bradford White's still receiving expansion based on the findings of fact that it meets all the standards in ordinance seventy-eight dash five forty-four of special land use in the I two heavy industrial district.
Support. We have a motion to approve the special land use of twenty nineteen dash five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abosed. All right. That moves us down to site plan twenty nineteen dash nine.
Yeah, the sound. No, no, we don't have one. Yep, yep. Okay, on the site plan, you'll see the, uh, the continuation of, uh, I believe it's a hatched area depicting where the steel receiving.
He's talking about paper steel hill too.
And, uh, so the hatched area represents the steel-receiving building. It is attached to the existing building. It, uh, and in front of that, you see the traffic circle, uh, which will be approximately where the existing, uh, security building is, the old credit union. Uh, that'll be the turnaround traffic circle for the trucks that gets the steel trucks off of Grand Rapids Street. Um, are, uh, consistent with all the construction that's going, um, concrete, stormwater management, uh, all the aesthetics and everything with the trees and greenery and required plantings and such. Um, there's a, there's a walkway depicted in the renderings that runs down the middle approximately of the parking areas, uh, so that the pedestrians have a safe walkway to be able to get through and over to what's now the only employee entrance. We have future plans to create multiple entrances for the employees so they don't all have to funnel to one location. Um, in the renderings, we, we depict some kind of a canopy over that walkway so in inclement weather, the employees, because they are walking a fair distance. And we want to encourage them to use the sidewalk rather than walking in driving lanes. So hot sunny days, raining days, snowy days, the intent is if it's there, they'll be more likely to use it because they'll stay dry and they'll, you know, not get overheated and everybody walking in. Um, again, we've, we comply with, certainly with the standards for landscaping and greenery and all that. Uh, we meet all the minimums and we typically go beyond that to try to enhance the view. Um, more fencing that may or may not be required, things like that. Uh, all the solid panel fencing, all the, uh, trees along Grand Rapids Street. Um, you know, as, as people that have seen the fence that's going up, we've got some character to it. It's not just a straight, long, white line. Uh, but we're, we're trying to, again, get that institutional look rather than industrial look, although they've, you know, Bradford White's been on that site since the fifties. Um, you know, and consistent with almost every other business. We never expected, I, I would imagine that it was ever gonna be what it is today. But, you know, we are, uh, we are and share concerns with the village and with the residents. We do our best to try to accommodate and, uh, um, put a best foot forward and be the good neighbors we always have. And we'll continue to do that, so.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, um, there were some questions that were raised before I go into my report. I don't think they're here. They're talking about how much parking can be, uh, on site. Um, as you can see on sheet.
G zero zero two, Brian.
G zero zero two. You know, this is kind of an overall layout. You know, this site plan specifically is talking about steel receiving and the steel truck entrance and the turnaround. Yes, it will have an impact on what we approved earlier this year for what is called the Northeast Parking Lot. This is actually a reduction in parking, if I'm not mistaken.
No, no, it's a, it's, it's an increase, but our total count.
Total count was.
Nine seventy-three.
Okay, this one shows nine hundred and forty.
But there's, there are more cycle parkings.
There you go. In any event.
Well, I mean, it makes sense.
In, in any event, you know, there's a lot of concerns we've heard, uh, with the facility itself. Now, the answer to the question is how many parking spaces there is. We have, we have maximum parking requirements, if you recall. That means you cannot exceed that many spaces. You can't have a minimum. It means there's only, there's so many jobs or employees that are there, there's so many spaces per employee. I can't name it off the top of my head, but it's more, one space per one.
One point three.
Three employees, right? The distance requirement for the parking from the entrance is four hundred feet. That means that it has to be within, the nearest parking spot has to be within four hundred feet. They're well within that range. We have discussed a lot of times about structure. I believe you guys have looked at that possibility of going up. It just hasn't really been an option at this time.
Yeah.
Any, any, any comments a little bit further on that? Cause I believe that was a concern that was raised.
Well, going up, it, in my opinion, aside from the, the cost, it's significant. It's, you know, it's three or four times as expensive as a grade level parking spot. Uh, times two, cause you gotta charge, it's the same cost for each level. So if you go up two levels, it's basically, you know, double the cost. Um, the, uh, uh, the other thing, it would be probably more of a detraction to the, the view of the neighborhood and everything to have this big structure that would be out close to Grand Rapids Street with, you know, vehicles on top and on the bottom. It also present, presents some safety as well. Safety concerns in the winter time, trying to keep it clear, uh, for safe pedestrian passage and, and snow removal. Um, so we, that's why we've opted to stay at grade level all along Grand Rapids Street. Um, I think too, that when we're all said and done, the, the appearance along Grand Rapids Street will be an improvement, particularly at the storage unit area as to what it is today. Um, you know, that's an older facility. It's, uh, it's now been relocated out to Crane, to, uh, Crane Road. But, uh, you know, again, every effort being made to make sure that we're as aesthetically pleasing as we can while meeting the ordinance.
Hmm, so, yeah, the only reason why I brought this up is because the way those truck route for the steel trucks, it would change the parking that we sell for Northeast Parking, so that's why we asked them to put this overall parking sheet on there. And when it came down to, there's elimination of some landscape islands and some trees, that's all been met through that center walkway.
Brian, can you flip to G zero zero two instead of referencing a print that they can't see? I can do my best. Hard to get the visuals.
I, I, yeah. Well, this is actually the market, right?
There we go.
This is from our site plan review, so we did, we have talked about this, you can clearly see. Um, so yeah, that's what we're talking, this is the building addition. The trucks will be coming in off of Carnival Drive, off of Crane Road, and then I believe they'll be going.
They'll go either way.
Either way.
Yeah.
Either way. I, the one thing we talked about in site plan review, you know what I'm talking about. Is Lafayette Street. This right now is not contingent on the vacation of Lafayette Street.
Correct.
But it is the intent to close it.
Well, our, our intent is during construction at times is to close Lafayette Street so that we can see and validate our traffic study that we did earlier.
But, yeah, but as far as it goes, the site plan is not contingent upon the vacation.
That's correct.
It may be closed for construction purposes, but you know, that's a village council decision. It has to be done to vacate the street, so that, I just wanna make sure, um, the planning commission is aware of that standard. As far as it goes, this site plan, you know, typically we look at parking, we look at landscaping, all those other type of things. This doesn't really meet that criteria. They are showing on the plan, so landscaping in front of the building, so trees in the island. There is the overhead high voltage, uh, line that would be, I'm understanding correctly, would be relocated. That was part of it.
Two of the poles.
Two of the poles would be relocated. Um, the parking lot itself, the Northeast Parking Lot would be slightly adjusted because of where that turnaround, uh, for the trucks are. Circulation, you know, it's still, it's still obviously gonna be a major concern with traffic down there. But the way that we have, um, have the ordinance and the way the site plan is approved, we have maneuvering lane aisles, the parking lane size, the directional arrows and the way it comes in and out looks as though this will not have a major impact on that, um, proposal of how parking would be coming in and out for circulation. As far as the stormwater drainage, um, maybe just touch on that real quick. There's a, uh.
Detention.
Detention everything, and that would be.
Yeah, that's in the traffic circle.
It's actually right here and right here.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go. These boxes are here. I'm a fan of white today, so. Yes.
I won't tell Van that you said.
I won't. Read that system one.
All right, yeah. So there's stormwater detention doghouses under the traffic turnaround. That's to receive the stormwater from the construct, from the building addition as well as the surrounding roadway that will meter it out into yet another detention system and ultimately metering it into the storm sewer system along Grand Rapids Street. And it's designed for a twenty-five-year event.
Yeah, and that discharge line into the city system is actually a two-inch line, very small.
Yep. And then we briefly talked about utilities. You saw the comments from the village engineer, um, fire chief for the fire protection line. That's really quite was an extensive project that he did. Part of the recent work, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, we put the secondary fire.
Yep, yep. So a lot of their, their, their projects, kinda, it all tines together here a little bit. But that is, is a newer building access, you know, as far as the utility, um, portion of it. Our fire chief, as you can see in the exhibit, agrees with that. And then there's no signs being shown. And then, um, the only question I had on my staff report was, um, lighting, how is there a look at the light? Cause that's one thing, we gotta make sure, you know, it's gonna be consistent with the existing proposed lighting. That's gonna be there for the R and D continuation along those lines.
Yeah, the parking area, yes, complies.
Built the building light.
The building lighting, anywhere that there's a building over a door or something, it'll be a direct down light. It'll be low mounted. It won't be high up. Um, and as far as the truck drive, we're talking, you know, we. And as far as the truck drive, we're talking, you know, we would look at lighting along pathway lighting, if you will, down low, so that we don't create these bright spots up in the sky beyond what's necessary in the parking lots.
Okay, good, so again, it's the idea. And right now, with the way it's, it shows that Lafayette Street on certain plans is, is vacated, but right now that is not contingent.
Correct.
And then you see the staff, the site plan committee recommendation with the condition of approval. I would say there was walking to carry it over. Yeah. Now, the one condition, talking about the stair tower on the southwest portion of the roof that has been revised on the site plan.
Correct, and they'll go all the way to the.
And, yeah, that's, that's about it. I mean, I've only submitted some, we had a site plan committee meeting last week and that was one of the discussion points there, other than providing, you know, they had to get special land use approval first. We obviously got that.
Yeah.
So that condition doesn't necessarily need to continue over, so.
All right, thank you, Brian. Discussion, deliberation, decision. What do we have in mind? It's involved straightforward. We've covered all the things since Dave.
Well, the email that Dave and Randy had provided as a correspondence kind of really told some of the tale, answered a lot of the questions that you would have for the. So I included that as a reserve. And I think, you know, from what he's saying, their satisfaction there really alleviates a lot of concerns on the public safety statement. And again, one thing we did, his documentation, it just showed on the plan, a sheet. Zero zero two, is that gate? Where the side would be on the north. Vated access for emergency vehicles that would come off of that. Really, that audio visuals.
Cooper, right.
So that, that was some, that was a concern that they had in watch the sign to be there. They may be necessary to change.
Yeah, we're not gonna hold this parking zero zero two with a whole lot of accord to anything with our site plan, right?
No, I think that, that is beyond.
It's the master plan that's.
That's, that's, that's something that we requested because has everything changed? And he's, he just wanted that to be shown.
I know I ended up over a thousand spots at the last meeting, so I know it's been reduced. And so, and constantly changing, that's what I'm saying. We can't really hold anything on that.
No, I think that's more of an informational, the sheets that really would be showing is.
The gate was a concern of the fire team.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, which it should be. I mean, he's gotta be able to get in there and he's gotta be able to get in there with four different departments. So he's gotta be able to coordinate that.
He just wanted to verify his access.
Well, that was another thing that we talked about is the gas issue that you guys had brought in departments from a lot of other areas. And at that point, the site plan committee had asked about it. And it doesn't matter what type of incident it is, they're sending in ladder trucks from all over, not knowing the severity, just for the neighbors and to know that. We don't have one in Thorn Mill at this moment, but as soon as the cops comes in, they are dispatched.
So you mentioned that there's only one entrance for employees and that you would be adding more entrances in the future?
Off of the, off of the final parking plan would be to have entrances down by the shipping department. Turnstiles, right now, everybody walks to the, to the corner of the main building.
Everybody comes right here. And eventually there will be here.
Right there, right.
Right here.
Right here. One down here that'll service the distribution building and assembly. Two down here that'll service the front office area. Because our, our long-term intent is to have a secured perimeter because these days you can't be too careful with some of the things that happen in large employment facilities is to increase the security and safety around the plant. But also listening to our employees and knowing that it's a pain to walk to one point to get into the building and then walk all the way through the building to get to where you work. So we're trying to address those concerns as well. And.
So you have a timeline for implementing?
Uh, Eric, all parking and turnstiles, I would expect to be complete by 2021. There's some future site plan reviews we'll have to go through when we review security and all that. And we'll wanna have not only the council, but also law enforcement and such. We wanna bring them in to make sure that they have their input on what they'd like to see.
So you said all construction would be done by 2021? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, well, between, between parking, because we've got future, future building infill within the existing building that we have yet to do after steel receiving. So that involves redoing the employee entrance and lunchroom and then the EHR department. So those are, those are future construction projects.
We'll be seeing more site plans going forward.
Yeah.
Yes.
But again, the overall footprint of the building isn't getting any bigger significantly in any way. It's just filling between the new R and D structure and the steel receiving. And those site plans, probably within the next five to six months, will be submitted for review.
Uh, the special land use condition from site plan committee recommendation is moot, so.
It's probably not necessary to have for site plan.
Probably not. And then the, the stair tower is, is on plans now. So the second half of that could go.
Yep, just with the part where approved conditions of the Thorn Appleton Fire Chief shall be met. That's correct, right?
All right, so I'm gonna move that we approve site plan 2019-09. Radford White still receiving expansion with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall provide to the village all as-built for the file. Two, approval conditions of the village engineer shall be met. Three, approval conditions of the Thorn Appleton Fire Chief shall be met. And four, all impacted site plans shall have the overall parking plan sheet submitted to the village for the file.
Support.
All right, we have a motion with support. For site plan 2019-9, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
If you guys.
I'll, we'll touch, I haven't.
What's that?
I, I don't want to. I realize, who would do that?
Yeah. That brings us down to administrative reports. I'm sorry, I'm trying to jump ahead here, okay? Give me credit. Committee reports, Brian.
I was just looking at these giant packets, because I can't trigger, so I gotta find them. All right, so October committee reports, real quick. Master plans, some committee. Uh, we had quite a detailed meeting talking about the future land use map, talking about especially areas where development pressure may be shown where we could see a change in the category for future land use. Some of these included like industrial. We talked about transitional mixed-use district from M thirty-seven to West Main Street and revising the low-density residential, median-density residential to more aligned with what the built-out environment is. We did talk about approaches to public participation. We reviewed housing and population demographics and discussed public streets. A kickoff meeting we're gonna have scheduled for December. I did run the idea that we talked about, Tom, about possibly having that incentive idea throughout our journey, and it was not very well received. I do appreciate, I wanna say this, I do appreciate all the creativity and all that's there, but we do need to make sure we kinda stay fair. But. But we.
Is that one of my past?
Is it good? Okay, okay.
Sorry.
So, um, so that's, uh, that's kinda what we talked about. We're, obviously, when we get on the planning commission, master plan, site plan review, it's gonna take up a lot of our time, so we'll, we'll do our best next month to make sure we're very, very efficient with what was talked about tonight moving forward. And then obviously, the site plan committee met last week. And that's where some of the changes were made. And obviously, I will send an email out, see if we get it all scheduled for the KC General Store, make sure we're on board with that. Ordinance committee and joint planning committee did not meet. Any questions on the floor? Mostly the report.
Where are we at on joint planning?
We are incorporating what we adopted together.
Our master plan.
And putting that in the master plan.
So we have a timeframe for when we're gonna meet back with the township and where this is where?
I don't have a timeframe right in front of me. But I think we all agree on the mutual language, talking about the future land use categories. We did talk about, maybe those on the committee, there were some categories in future land use map that didn't really apply to the village specifically. We would take that off. And then the, the point is, is if you have, the language needs to be the same for, for both. And that's kinda where, it's just how we incorporate in our timeframe. I think it might be, did discuss possibility of having another committee amongst us have that. But obviously, as the notice group goes out, Thorn Appleton Planning Commission is it. And maybe they'll get an opportunity to really discuss that a little more detail, kinda get a little bit more there.
Saw this deadline coming up here.
Yes.
So I was wondering.
Oh, well, you know, I, we're working on.
Sooner rather than later, if we're gonna be incorporating that in master plan, we're gonna have a master plan discussion in January. We probably should be, at the very least, meeting at committee level to see if that's progressing.
Correct. All right.
Okay, your report.
All right, so you, real quick, you saw my reports. New dwellings, new condos over there at High Ridge. Obviously, everything that goes along with that. We have forty-four new single-family dwelling permits, three condos, one lot left in phase six of Misty Ridge. Twelve, excuse me, nine lots in Rolling Oaks, phase three. And as I mentioned, we're gonna, next month, we're gonna see phase four of Rolling Oaks' final preliminary plot on the agenda. Okay? Some new temporary sites. There is an all-state insurance agency that has come into the marketplace. One of the vacant suites, I wanna say it was a former Sheer Pleasures location, if I'm not mistaken.
They're having ribbon cutting late from today to four o'clock. Okay. Is anyone connected?
Yep, yep. So that's, that's about it. And lofts in Middleville across the street, one-on-one, eleven species largely completed. They worked on the foundation work and the facade work on the north facade. They've really kinda begun moving on the interior construction framing. And they're still on, from our conference call today, looking at a spring 2020 completion date. ZBA will be meeting tomorrow. Variance request against a driveway easement for a condominium development located behind storage buildings at four seventy-two Arlington. If you remember, John Raymond came in, who owns Tyrus Two Thousand, had storage buildings behind it. This is, this is the first step in the process to where there's a request for a variance on the width of a driveway easement. If that gets approved, it will probably come forward in the next couple of months, near future for the, for the planning commission for site plan review.
Was our riverfront easement recorded?
No, not.
That was a condition?
Of.
Of the storage units.
Easement? Go back and check.
Make sure that's recorded before we even see that site plan?
For the pathway, sideboard, whatever, what was there, easement in the front?
No, no, there's an easement in the back.
I'll check. I don't recall.
I thought it was a suggestion, I didn't think we.
We, what we talked about was that he put sidewalk in and if it were ever to be developed, and again, I'm not going off of memory here, so I won't let it get to me. Is that if it were to be developed, you could have that riverfront easement in lieu of, again, he, and I'll, I'll say this. From what the conversations we've had with, with John Riven, is that he's very receptive to that idea. To where it's not a punitive approach, it's a very collaborative approach. Okay?
No, just wanna make sure it was recorded because we've been.
Yeah, you're, you're, and then you saw some of the ongoing, I mean, the site plans that are going on, I won't touch on that too much, but, um, the Campbell property, they talked about that one. The portion of the storage units are largely complete. They still need to finish the gates before that gets completely signed off. There was a discussion of the other half of that that was talking about the staging area. From the conversations, they, they decided to leave. We're probably gonna see amendment to that plan. Okay? There's some revisions to be made on, on the circulation on that. And, um, the, yep. And I just wanted, really, the last one, there was public comment talking about Greg's get and go. That is on a delay. There is delay in the construction part of that process. I can't speak towards what he said about financing, but yes, there is a delay on the actual construction activity and demolition on site. So I don't have any update for you on that, but I don't think there's gonna be any activity this calendar year. I have spoken with the applicant to say if it hasn't come up with a new timeframe, you need to submit writing, an extension of site plan, special land use approval.
Didn't that expire in October?
That one did not. That one was approved in February, if I recall.
It was, yes.
It was planned in the ZBA and why not? It was something about the canopy, that was the.
Well, they, if you recall, there was the canopy, the variance for the canopy. Then they decided that that wasn't necessary because they're gonna demolish the building. And so in January, we reviewed the site plan, but we went back and forth. And the notes that I have, the date was, was February. So, and, and it's a way of, you know, saying, are you gonna do this or are you not gonna do it? And you need to put that right. And so we had that for the bottom. So, again, that's probably gonna come up soon.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Any comments or questions on the co-enforcement? That moves us down to public comments. Does that have anything?
I am wondering.
I'll move to the mission of comments, there you go.
Uh, the Rolling Oaks, Brian, between three and four. So the phase three plot has got open space on two of the corners, but the phase four has got lot numbers. And so I just.
I can speak to that a little bit.
Okay.
The legal description on all those. The legal description on all those phases did not include that open space.
It didn't, okay.
So the legal descrip...
So they're taking advantage of it.
So what I'm saying is, it was just on a map.
Yeah.
It says open space, but it was never part of the legal description of that. And so the fact that they're gonna include that as a lot is part of the legal description of phase four, not previous spaces. Does that make sense?
That is something we could ask them about it, right?
We can consider why that would change was made. And I have spoken to the engineer about it, they wanted to get two more lots. Right? But yet, we have the considerations that was brought up by Mr. Farrell, that is justifiable when it, it, it does show that would be open space, or goofy shaped blocks begin.
Right.
And it was reflected on all the previous plans that were submitted, so...
So again, I apologize that that wasn't something during the preliminary plan, the final preliminary plan.
We can talk about.
We can discuss, and we can say, you know, instead of getting forty-two lots, we can get forty lots.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's, it's a consideration, but as far as depth, width, size, if a lot, if it meet our requirements, it's element, it's just shape goofy.
Yeah.
If I were to make a, talk about my recommendation was, we, we make sure we define which one is the rear guard setback, so that we can put, make sure the building on the slope and the driveway be corresponding to avoid any of the negative externalities of a house being where they were told, uh, what it is. Now again, that's why we create escrows and have our attorney review this stuff, because if it's not in the legal description, you know, there's a chance of that.
We talk about that when we see them.
Oh, we, we, we're busy, aren't we, we're going right through.
You good, Brian?
I'm not gonna say where.
So... It was good to see a lot of people here. And there are concerns to hear them.
No, it wasn't, there's not anything we can do about it, is what we told them, I mean, first. I'm sorry, two comments. The plan didn't say anything.
Brian? Oh, it was a good meeting, and good turnout. It was good, unfortunately, we couldn't make a decision today, which hopefully you can get to that next time. I'm still concerned about the gas station issues, since you're here, I'm gonna ask you.
Yeah.
How, I mean, when you do a business plan, one of the first things you do is a market study and determine demand in the community.
And how do they come up with a gas station and another general store? Alright, so I am the owner of the property, I am not gonna be affiliated once the sale actually happens and comes through in the future. So I'm the existing owner. Um, so therefore, my name's on all the permits, et cetera. But you, Casey's General Store is a national company, and they had, currently have one store in the state of Michigan, this would be the second, and they already plan on expanding into Michigan. So they've looked at Middleville as a great location for them in the future. They have the whole state to look at, this is gonna be their second location. So they've gone through the demographic information, they know the population, they know the income levels, they know the household percentages. When you look at any business, all of those factors go in to play and in consideration. Um, so they've gone through that market research, they have a whole team to develop and expand and grow their business. So they've done their homework on this, I can assure you of that. And they're gonna make a very hefty investment into creating this gas station. I mean, just like any business would, to create a standalone facility, it's a hefty investment. And they feel, and they have a track record that proves, in my mind, that one will succeed here.
I can follow up on that, when they first contacted the village, it was known, all the other gas stations were approved.
Yes.
Yes.
It wasn't, it was anything that this was...
It's not like they've been, the rugs come out from underneath them, and this has been in the works. And they knew ahead of time that J and H was going in, that Greg's could go in, and they still feel that even with all of the other competition, that they will succeed and be successful here. I think the main thing that they offer that doesn't get enough credit is their restaurant component. We're not a big enough population to support a freestanding fast food service at this point. And I think that is the thing that they are gonna thrive on. Because they offer sandwiches and subs and pizza and wings and all kinds of other stuff. And because we don't have the population requirements for the other fast food chains yet, I think they will stand alone in that aspect, in that regard.
I think with the traffic that's going around there...
Do they consider this like a truck stop?
No.
No, this is far from it.
Yeah, it, and like, like we said, they specialize in small towns. I mean, their target market is towns under five thousand people. That's really what they look for, and it's that, that store component that makes it a viable and successful thing. It's a store and restaurant. What's that? What's that? I missed a guy.
The store component of it, because I don't know if you use a hand, a gas station. Even if we, there's other business types that we need.
And I was talking to the engineer. They may possibly adjust their site plan anyway, if that's a major concern with the gas pumps. They could drop it down the number of pumps if that, because it does sound like that's a concern, is people are afraid there's gonna be too many gas pumps, et cetera. So they're, they may drop down the number of pumps. Now, I'm not the engineer, I'm not the owner, so I can't say that they're going to for sure, but that's one thing that they, she said she'd look at and talk to with them before the next meeting.
Once, I was just gonna say, we've heard from the owner, we've heard from the engineer, we would like, probably be good to hear from the company itself to be here, to answer the questions. And I think that's really would help, uh, this whole process, because there's a lot of assumptions being going on. And they're not based out of Michigan, I guess. The engineering company is out of Ohio.
And the engineering company, she, her offices end up with.
Yeah.
So they are a national organization, that in their headquarters is in Iowa. So to get somebody to fly up for Iowa may be a stretch, to say the least.
Well, the chosen commitment, and that's just kinda...
Right.
That is why they hire an engineering firm though, to represent themselves, and they are afforded that opportunity to do so. Because not everybody's job is to stand up in front of a crowd and speak and pitch the idea.
And by the time she's here, they've already made their decisions, and it's a viable option, and they're gonna...
Exactly, they've gone through the market research and determined this is a good location. They've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars to get their site plan done, to do the surveys, to do all the market research. They wanna be here.
Mike?
That kinda ties into my comment right there, I mean, we, I mean, it, it's understandable that the neighbors are contentious about this, but it would be the shoe on the other foot if someone came in for, I want another garage, and I want it close to the property line, and we told them, no, but I checked all the boxes. You know what, you're, you're still within your setback, you've got, you've met all the requirements, but you know what? Your neighbor doesn't like it, no.
Yep.
And, and that's, just like you said, and Justin put it perfect, I mean, they've already invested based on what our ordinance is and our zoning is, and they spent a bunch of money to come here, and...
But they ignored the master plan.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, kinda they have, because...
Can I make a comment to that, though?
They're facing Main Street, not the highway that they're here for.
Cause the master plan, that drawing specifically was done at what timeframe?
That was in oh-six, with that urban design concept.
Okay.
The, the site plan does follow some of those concepts. It doesn't specifically follow that as a site plan.
Did the, the village own the property across the street at that time?
I don't know.
No.
They did not.
They did.
Because a lot of those comments were towards creating a great visual opportunity for the village. And now Middleville has the opportunity for them to do that themselves. Not to allow other property owners to create that visual impact and to define the city space. Sorry, I just, personal thought, I just, I know it's out of order and...
We've discussed that on our, uh, future land use plan.
Well, yeah, it's late, this reminds me of late church meetings, but I'll point it out in the hard way. Um, I'm not supposed to be discussing these things outside of here, because then it becomes a, a small, you know, subcommittee, we're not supposed to have... So, yeah, so the problem is, I don't know how to ask questions, uh, except here, right? So, uh, two questions I have, well, I got about fifty, but I'll stay with only two of them. Um, one, I, I was a little surprised, I thought, by a comment tonight, I thought we would make, uh, our recommendation to the village council, but my understanding, you said tonight, ours is the final say, is...
We revised the ordinance a few years ago where the ordinance was inconsistent on whether a planning commission or village council approves a special land use. Part of the advocacy process clarified that, um, village council, excuse me, planning commission approves special land uses.
So the bug stops here?
Correct.
Okay, that was news to me. Um, yeah, I knew it just, second, I guess what I'm puzzled about was, um, yeah, I'm new to some of this, but I think, I thought public comment was supposed to be taken into consideration in decisions. Now, obviously, some of the public comments, in my opinion, were out of line. Um, but it seemed to me out of line the, uh, as well, the unspoken or even spoken, uh, opinion that public comment is irrelevant to final decision, now, did I miss something here?
That's a real shit question.
It's not always irrelevant. That what we're looking for with public comment is a valid concern that would trigger a safety standard or something like that, not a, I don't want this in my backyard, that type of public comment doesn't really have any bearing on whether or not they have a legal right to be there.
Yeah, I, I, I'll touch on that, I think there's an important component of public participation in anything we do. Especially land uses prompts the requirement for a public hearing, it's taken into consideration. It's us, our job, staff, and the planning commission to absorb all that, those comments, and try to formulate the best decision. And if it's based on some factual content. If we go too far off, um, subjective arbitrary, it's hard. Cause you'll get a lot of comments that, you know, are under the realm of NIMBY, not my backyard.
Right.
I get that, and I do think it's good that we listen. Now, if this were permitted use, we wouldn't have had to have this whole requirement, and the gas station could've just came in, meeting our site plan approval. But now that we've heard all these concerns, there are some legitimate concerns, and it can really be taken consideration, uh, for those standards. I, I, I didn't, I hope it wasn't to where anything where it was perceived that whatever they say doesn't have an impact. But it does involve a lengthy discussion, you know, of where the community is going. Yes, this is rather unprecedented, to have this many proposal of a gas station. But let's take, let's take a step back and say, if this were two years ago, and this would've been the third gas station, would we still have these comments, and would it still have met those standards?
Well, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's, you gotta give some due process to the, to the applicant.
You mean, for, for the, okay, fair enough.
And I'm just, I'm just saying...
And some of the concerns that they had, we addressed in the site plan committee, we talked about crosswalks at every drive, so that the kids, so it's denoted, so they know where they're crossing. The comment about the explosion...